Since the grownups table.
Committee on Finance and Law will come to order on calling the role, Mr. Susan.
Present.
Mr. Fiore is present and Mr. Martin is absent. There are no student activities to report this month. Next item on the agenda is an outline of expedited procedure for adding certain kinds of vouchers to a special warrant and turn that over to Mrs. Moynihan for an explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. I usually don't like to read off of a memo, but I do think it's very important to follow this because there is such detail that needs to be explained. So just so you are aware, the special warrant is something that we've been having for many years now, and the special warrant is something that we have approved vouchers that can be processed weekly. So those vouchers that are processed weekly are the ones that are listed at the bottom. So the last time we added a type of voucher to the special warrant was way back in March 2nd, 2016, where the school committee added number 12, unused SEC and 403B contributions to be approved list, bringing the approved special warrant voucher to 12, again listed on the memo. So at this time, I'm requesting the addition of the number 13, reissuing vendor payments due to underlying conditions to the approved special warrant voucher list. My office has contacted the city auditor's office and confirmed their support and approval. Adding this item to the approved special warrant list would help expedite payments to vendors that would appear regularly on the warrant, thus escalating the payment process. Under the current warrant process, it takes three weeks for an invoice to be entered, approved by the school committee, and then approved by the city to issue a check for a payment. Upon approval, the city auditor's request an updated list of vouchers accepted under the special warrant process, including the new item, number 13, reissuing vendor payments due to underlying conditions. And if you look at the bottom of all the listings of one through 13, some of the underlying conditions could be a stopped payment, a lost payment, or uncashed check. So in other words, we had a vendor that we did submit a check to them way back in August, and it never had been cashed. So what happened was they would have to be issued another check, take another three weeks to go through the process, where we already had it approved way back in August by the school committee. So again, this is something that has been added to in the past, and we're asking for number 13, which is approved by the city auditor's office.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Susan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if I just can review this just for a minute here. So I remember a portion of this, but some of it I don't remember. So basically, right now, we currently have in place the first 12 items on this list, and this has been in place for quite a few years before this, and we added the number 12, the unused SEC, back in 16. And so all we do want to do is just add the reissuing vendor payments due to underlying conditions to this list. That's all we're doing, right?
Correct.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
The chair seconds. The motion is made seconded to approve that addition to the special warrant category. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed, so voted. Next item is update on the first quarter fiscal year '22 budget, and again, Mrs. Moynihan.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. So the first one that we're looking at is our appropriation for the line item budget, and as again, I will go ahead and look at each of the items listed for the line item budget, and you'll see what the percentage is expended on the last column. And I have listed, excuse me, second to the last column, and in the last column, I did add some additional notes. But please see at the very bottom of it, this is quarter one, which is through September 2021. So if you take a quarter, it's 25% of our budget, and as of right now, we've expended about just under 11% of our budget. So if we're at a quarter of the way through the fiscal year, and we have just expended just under 11%, we are in very good financial status. But as you can see, some of the expended percentages that are higher than what we would expect, like one of them is, let's look here, 4,444.50, where we're at, where we allocated under what we have expended. So right now, we have expended more than $134,000. And I made the note, I saw these charges, the additional charges, will be transferred to ESR. So what's happening is the ESR grant has been received, we're going through all of the processes that need to go through, through the auditing office, and then what we will do is we'll transfer some of the costs that are allocated to this account that is acceptable under ESR, and we will transfer that to balance out this line item. Now, in this line, we could be saying here, and again, this one is the technology, maintenance, and supplies, and one of the costs that we'll be able to move to ESR is the updating of our Wi-Fi security, and one also is an additional technology staff. So some of those costs that we have currently in there will be able to be transferred over to ESR, just like the other ones that I have listed, four other lines that have listed there that we will be charging costs from the line item to ESR. Any questions on the appropriation?
Chair, move to revolving.
Okay, the next one is revolving, and are revolving again as we currently have, we've, through September of 2021, we've added a revenue of over $300,000 in various accounts. Currently, through September 2021, in our revolving account, we have $4.8 million. Now, please note that, as you can see for the school choice line, we have not received any revenue, and we will be receiving revenue very, very soon. And those will be, we should be hitting, and I think it's like November, the November, December, so we should be hitting our first school choice payments there. So again, as of right now, we have $4.8 million and with additional revenue coming forth. There's no questions for that. I will move on to our grants. So our grants are in two pages, and as you can see here where we are, each grant is listed by fiscal year, the name, the manager, the purpose of the grant, the start date, the end date, the budget of that, of the grant awarding, and then what we have left in our balance. So as of right now, at the very bottom of our grants' balance, we have a budget of $23 million, but our balance is currently just about $12.5 million in our budgets to be allocated. Now again, we are working with our grant managers and our grant writer that, making sure that we are adhering to all of our grants and making sure that we expend all of our finances or charges that need to in the grants before the due dates.
Mr. Chairman, as far as the FY '22 quarter one budget updates on the three line items presented, move received and placed on file.
Chair seconds. Any further discussion? You're in all in favor, seconded by a saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed, so voted. Then we have two bills payable warrants. First, a balance from fiscal year '21 of $874.20 and a warrant for fiscal year '22 of $546,043.54.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Page six, second one from the bottom, Goodfellas Trucking.
Goodfellas Trucking is a company that the Food Services Department did hire to transport milk and fruits and vegetables.
Oh, yes, I see that. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Moynihan. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set. I reviewed the rest of it. Move we do the bills payable warrant, FY '22 with the amount of $847.20, and FY '22 with the amount of $546,043.54.
All right, I'm going to have to ask to vote present on the voucher for the Old Colony History Museum, which is paying for the educational programs that they do.
We're gonna have to take that out there and vote on it, the whole committee?
Yes, that's what I was gonna say, that'd have to be voted on by the full committee.
All right.
So we have a motion made and seconded to approve both of those, holding out the one for Old Colony because of Mike.
Mr. Chairman, what page is that on? Do you know what page that's on?
Yeah, page 11.
Okay, I'll just refer to that, I'll, we'll refer back to that during the, during the meeting.
I will tell you.
Oh, I see it.
It is a newly revamped program. They've just spent a good deal of time and money developing, and they've gotten very good response in the system from it.
All right, I'll refer back to that in the original, in the meeting of everyone.
Okay, so again, on those two warrants, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed, so voted. And finally, a facilities update, Mrs. Moynihan.
I just want to thank our groundskeepers yet again to getting our buildings ready to go for the winter season. They have been doing, sprucing up our fronts of our buildings by adding greenery and berries to all of our pots, flower pots that are in front of all of our buildings, to make our buildings more festive and welcoming. Also, I visited Taunton Alternative High School today to see how the project, the window project was going. They are inside and doing some external things as well, but they're doing, finishing up the mill work within the building, and you see a lot of painting and all, so we're seeing our finishing touches of the window project. Next week, there is a meeting that's coming up with the rest of the timeline, so we're hoping to have, next Thursday, we're hoping to have a possibility of a completion date where the entire project will be ready and completed, and then, of course, with some punch lists if needed. But the windows do look great, there's a lot of light coming through, and they, very nice job thus far.
Right, the motion being ordered, received and placed on file.
Motion adjourned.
Well, need to act on it.
Oh.
Received and placed on file.
Received and placed on file, I'm sorry.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, now.
Motion adjourned.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, we're out of here.
Marcus, let's throw them clear. I call the regular meeting of the school committee Wednesday, December 1st, 2021, to order. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we continue the meeting, I'd just like to make everyone aware that we have a memorial table set up for our former colleague, Peter Corr, passed away yesterday, and we saw it fitting to have a memorial table here. He served on the school committee for 20 years, served with me personally for eight, and he's going to be dearly missed, and I'd like to, Mrs. Fagan, to continue with our program.
Do the prayer first, right?
Yes.
Okay. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and gracious and ask our blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to the community and to the young people entrusted to our care. I'll do the roll, then we'll do the moment of silence. Ms. Doherty? Mr. Pulowski? Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present, Mr. Martin's absent, Mrs. Almeida? She's present on the TV, thank you.
Present!
Oh, there she is. Mr. DeMello?
Present.
And Chairman Souza.
Present.
And now I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for three people who were all involved with the Taunton school system. The first one is Susan Cravelo, who was a longtime teacher in Taunton. She passed away on November 16th, I'm sorry, November 18th, and she enjoyed the challenge of working with middle school children, and our sympathies go out to her family. The next one is Sharon Derubio, the wife of Gus Derubio, who's passed away since past. She was a longtime teacher at Taunton High School. The two of them were always around. He was the athletic director, and he's had a field named after him, but the two of them really truly enjoyed life together, and they were a very nice couple and just wonderful people, and just loved being with the children at the high school. So our thoughts and sympathies go out to her surviving children. And last but not least, Peter Corr, age 84, who passed away yesterday at Morton Hospital. Graduate of Coyle High School, and from what my husband said, because he grew up in the neighborhood where all the kids admired Peter, he was the football hero. He just was just always just a wonderful man to all the children around him. He served in the Marine Corps and the Korean War, and he really was proud of all the things he could do for the city, and I'll never forget how happy he was when we instituted the ROTC program. I was fortunate enough to be elected to the committee the same year he was, so we were together for the whole time until he retired, you know, a couple of years ago. What a wonderful man, really loved this community, would do anything for anybody, and for his children, Peter, Melissa, and Christine, heartfelt sympathies. He had a wonderful man there, and we were also blessed to know Mr. Peter Corr. I don't know if anybody else would like to say anything? Okay, moment of silence.
Well, first of all, I have to say I've lost a big part of my childhood this week. I grew up with Mrs. Derubio's children. I went to kindergarten with her daughter Shelley, and she and my mother, when they were stay-at-home moms, were the best of friends. And Peter was elected to the council when my dad was elected to the school committee when I was nine years old, and I go back with him all that time. So I feel a tremendous loss, but also great gratitude for having known those people.
So in his memory and the other two people, let's have a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Colleagues, approval of the minutes of November 17, 2021, number B on our agenda. Letter B, I'm sorry.
Move approval.
Chair, second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On discussion, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the subcommittee report out on item C, the motion was made by Mrs. Almeida, you'll see it's blank, Mrs. Wendy Devine has pointed it out to me. So I'd like to amend that Mrs. Almeida made the motion, seconded, hold on. I seconded, seconded, I made the motion, and Mrs. Almeida?
That's correct.
Was seconded, seconded the motion, to adjourn. Just very simple, but it became complicated.
Yes, thank you, Mr. DeMello, I didn't catch that. We are going to, let's, Mrs. Fagan made, Mr. Fiore made the motion, right? Will you add that amendment to the motion?
I will.
And who made the second? Mr. DeMello seconded it. You're okay with that, right?
On this?
On this motion?
No, I can't. I can second it.
Yes, thank you. On the motion and the second to amend was included, we just included that in the original motion to accept the approval of the minutes. On that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Item C, Student Advisory Committee Report, and tonight we have with us one of Taunton High's amazing students, Hector Aponte.
Hello, thank you. My name is Hector Aponte, and I'm a senior at Taunton High School, and honestly, everything is going really well. So for this first couple of months, there were some ups and downs, and that was generally expected from COVID, coming back from a remote year and going back into this environment where the freshmen and eighth graders hadn't really been introduced to that environment in a high school before. So there were certainly some ups and downs, but now it just feels normal again for the most part, besides masks or some of the small tedious things. But it's starting to go back to normal, if not, I'd say better, so that's really good to see. The fall season concluded for sports, the winter season's starting. I'm sorry if my hair's a mess, I just got back from swim practice, but things are going really well, clubs are going really well, events are starting to come up a little bit. So it's really going back to a normal year, and I was actually told to come prepared today, so I was given a packet, which I read through very quickly coming after swim practice. But I just wanted to say inside, there's a couple of things, I know the superintendent report will be discussed today, and I kind of read through it, and it was kind of interesting to see that some of the things that are talked about are kind of seen within the high school. There's kind of like a trickle-down effect, so even if we don't see 100% of what's in this packet, we still see some trickle downs, such as, I think a big part is social media. So on Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, seeing posts like, enjoy your winter break, or enjoy your Thanksgiving break, stuff like that, what we've never had before, it's kind of good to kind of see that now, because it kind of feels a little bit more as a community. So I just want to say, from what I've seen, it's good to see that trickle-down effect. Thank you.
I hope you, I hope you see some of my tweets, too.
Certainly.
I always try to make sure you guys know that what you guys do is important, what these students do is important. Any questions for Hector? We need a motion to accept his report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is public input. Wendy? We have no public input for this evening. Next item on the agenda is diploma presentation to Mr. Richard Permentel. It's an honor to have Richard Permentel here, Vietnam veteran, U.S. Marine, and I'm gonna ask the superintendent. And I'm going to ask the superintendent of schools to... Christine, I'm sorry.
Would you want me up there or where?
Probably up there would be better. Mrs. Fagan? Mrs. Fagan is representing the high school subcommittee, and she is going to take over from here.
Yes, so I can even be...
That would help, wouldn't it? I can't begin to tell you what an honor and a privilege it is to be able to present this diploma to Mr. Richard Pimental. When he first approached me a couple of years ago, we've had this for a while. And like everything else, COVID came in and messed this whole little procedure up, too, so we could never really get together to do this. But back in 2005, 2006, they added something to mass general laws that amended section four of chapter 71, which basically said, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, school committees may award diplomas to any World War II veteran, Korean War veteran, or Vietnam veteran who is a resident of the Commonwealth, who attended the high school maintained by the school committee, who withdrew from secondary school before graduation in order to serve in the armed forces of the United States, who did not receive a high school diploma as a consequence of that service, and who was honorably discharged from the armed services. So Mr. Pimental made all these things. He achieved all of this. And in spite of this, that he didn't get his high school diploma, he managed to get an associate's degree and a regular bachelor's and a master's degree. But he never had his high school degree, his high school diploma, I'm sorry, on his wall. So here you go, Mr. Pimental. Taunton High School, this certifies that Richard P... Is it P or D? P. P. Pimental has been awarded this diploma by the City of Taunton School Committee for graduation from this high school June 1964. And it's signed by the headmaster, Mr. Cabral, the superintendent, Josephine B. Almeida, who's the chairperson of the high school subcommittee, and Shauna O'Connell, the mayor. So this really is an honor to be able to give this to you. And it's been a long time coming, but now you can fill up that empty space on the wall. So by the power invested in me, now to a graduate of Taunton High School. Did you like to say something?
It's been a long time. And if it wasn't for my one dear wife, who had the privilege of having hers, and I didn't have mine. Even though she did all my college papers, and there was many before laptops and computers, the old typewriter, and she would always throw this in my face. And I would say, well, I have this degree, and she went to that graduation. And I would have this one, and she went to that graduation. And I had this one, and that. And she said, you don't have this one. Honey, we're even. Let me tell you. Very important people in my life. And, you know, at a young age, you know, and I often tell my grandchildren children, high school was very important because, you know, you miss things. You miss your parents. You know, you have a sport. You just miss doing things. And, you know, I graduated from Paris Island High School, or whatever that was. And then, you know, faith in people is very important. And I often tell my children, Miss Grace, a teacher at Maxim School, grabbed me one time because I didn't have the best potential. And she sat me down, I'll never forget it. And she gave me cookies and milk. And she said, Richard, you have potential. Why don't you use it? I said, oh, okay. Here I am with people that are very familiar to me. The representative, the superintendent. Thank you so much, very kind. Jody, also Jody Almeida. Although this would be very nice to a blank screen. Of course, Christine and Mr. Souza. And I see other friends in here. My grandchildren, my daughter. You know, there's just very important steps. I really, really enjoyed working in this community, and I still do. When you can have people call you Mr. Pimental and Captain, you know, that means an awful lot. Not like, hey, Pimental, either. When they put that Mr. in front of you, that's a respect. And now it's, the nickname is always there because I work very hard for the captain. I go, this is the captain. That's the way it is. And I appreciate, and I appreciate the friends and relationships I have. And before I start crying, I'm going to get out of here. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now I have the honor of giving a high school diploma to somebody a lot of them are going to expect you, and I'm so glad you got it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
No laugh, respect. I've had foot surgery.
No problem, thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, we do a lot of things here, and... Oh, hold on just for a second.
Thank you, everyone.
Graduated college?
I am going to continue on. We do a lot of things here in the 12 years that I've been here. Doesn't get more emotional than that for me. That was pretty amazing. Thank you, colleagues and the superintendent, for making this happen. Next item on the agenda is F, the district accountability review. Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Mr. or Chairman Souza. So Mr. Barata will be presenting shortly, but I just wanted to queue things up for Mr. Barata, if you don't mind. So we're going to be presenting to you some of the measures. And notice, I'm saying some of the measures that we use or some of the indicators that we utilize to hold the Taunton Public Schools accountable and to also measure how well our students are performing in school and how well our students are performing once they leave the Taunton Public Schools. So when we went into MCAS, so prior to MCAS last year, there was a lot of discussion at the state level and at the federal level about whether or not to hold MCAS. And the determination was made, despite many appeals and despite the ongoing pandemic, that MCAS would be held in person and also virtually for students who are not attending in person. And as Mr. Barata will share, and I won't belabor my introduction to Mr. Barata, what I want to emphasize is I think what you're going to see is what many anticipated we would see after having our students out of normal school and in crisis schooling for 18 months. I think the results show what we anticipated and what we expected to see. But I just want to remind the public and remind the school board, this is just one measure or one indicator. And I want everyone to be mindful that the MCAS is held at the end of the school year, and we don't receive this data until the following school year. So it's almost, if you want to use an analogy, like an autopsy, because we cannot go back and remediate. So in the Taunton Public Schools, we've been very strategic as far as utilizing formative assessments to give us a real-time snapshot of where our children are so that we can put together plans or put together strategies, develop summer school programming to help our students make the gains that our formative assessments indicate where students maybe need a little more opportunities to grow while also demonstrating where they are growing. So with that being said, I would like to introduce Christopher Barata, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. And I'll stop talking, and I'll turn things over to Chris. So Chris, thank you for being with us this evening, and everyone looks forward to hearing your presentation.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody, for this year's accountability review. And as Mr. Cabral mentioned, and Ms. Fagan alluded to it, because of COVID, a lot of things changed. So what we were normally used to seeing our accountability report, which we would flash on the screen and see all these multiple boxes and such, that does not exist for this year. As Mr. Cabral mentioned, the Department of Elementary and Second Education was very vocal about saying, look, this data should not be used to compare yourself to other school districts because the circumstances were very much different, school district to school district and also within districts themselves. Accessibility, technology, staffing, student absences, all factored in. So although we did comply with the testing requirement, which was valid and reliable because they designed the test to measure, we can't lose track of what our students and our staff members endured during that time. Remember, the 1920 school year, we closed on March 13th, and we began at the elementary levels and actually a little bit into the middle schools, creating packets for learning. Where at the middle school level, we did have exposure. Our students had exposure and daily usage of technology, which our capable educators dove in and tried to implement fully, along with the high school, which used part of their practice with technology, specifically growing out of the English Language Department, Dr. Sarah Buckley and the use of Study Sync, one of the highly regarded curriculum matters. Our students at the high school had more fluidity with the use of computer. So knowing that what we went into and what our students endured, and our parents, who were actually teachers in residence, I guess you'd say, and I'll present you with sort of the bare bones presentation of the Taunton Public School Accountability Rating versus the state of Massachusetts. And as Mr. Cabral alluded to, which was no secret, and we all knew that our results across the Commonwealth would be impacted greatly by it. So our growth or lack of growth aligned with what every community across the Commonwealth has noticed. So I'll start off with our mission statement, part of our work in progress strategic plan. Taunton Public Schools will foster a lifelong passion for learning, so that all students become self-advocates who persevere and positively impact the global community. And our vision, that Taunton Public Schools will provide all students with culturally responsive learning experiences that support their academic, social, emotional needs. Our students will be self-advocates who are empowered with choice in their learning and post-secondary goals, positively impacting the community. Now, what was different regarding our MCAS administration? For grades three through eight, DESI expanded the window to allow for testing. Again, as we integrated our students back into phase and approach, DESI realized you can't have standard days within the smaller condensed windows of testing. They expanded that. Fortunately, Taunton was ahead of the curve in acceleration of students coming in, which then afforded our younger students, first, our most needy students were in much earlier, our high-needs students, those special needs and such, but also bringing our elementary more quickly than perhaps other school districts. So that was a positive. Students experienced a shortened test versus the long-form tests. One test, it was counted to one session versus two sessions. And again, if we go back in the Wayback Machine, DESI said, the Department of Elementary said, this exam was to be used for diagnostic purposes, basically assessing where your students are going out, not that type of comparative that we've always done in the past. Students who were fully remote were able to participate in the assessment process. Again, even trickier because now we were at certain grade levels, say, the high school who came in later, right? Our educators were teaching remotely, students at home. Now imagine what has to take place to proctor a state exam while a child is in their living room, dining room table and such. Again, our teachers, our educators, our active proctors when our students are in the building, spacing, materials, make sure there's no electronics and such. They had to adapt and not only test with students in front of them, but at home. For the high school, the testing window, again, was extended and started later in the year. Again, we were ahead of the curve bringing back our students. Other districts weren't as much, pushing it later to the end of the year to make sure they could capture those students before June. Students could be awarded a modified competency determination, ELA mathematics, based upon district certification, that students earn full credits for the relevant course matter. This, I think, goes back to perhaps two school committee meetings prior, where our new Director of Special Education, Amy Moynihan, in conjunction with the Special Education Department, talked about the graduation rate of our special needs students. This is really, goes to what Mr. Cabral has said and the state is beginning to talk about. There has to be other ways in which we can credit our students for their work. This process for our students This process for our students who earned those competency determinations actually goes back to the courses in which they took in Taunton High School in alignment with the state and looked at their passing grade and whether or not they could qualify for the competency determination. Again, that process is done by not only our Director of Special Education, but the high school, Kristin Keenan, working with the Special Department, making sure all that documentation is placed. Amy Moynihan, prior Judy Mulrooney, along with Dan Fagan, our out-of-district coordinator, who has to go out and get those test scores from those out-of-district placements to make sure our students, because they are ours, earn their competency determination. And then at the accountability for all schools, we don't receive any designations before they say, you know, your district in targeted assistance or comprehensive assistance stuff. Basically, we're provided with a stayhold measure with those students that were involved and the state would support. The statewide system with support team, working with Mulcahy Elementary, Martin Middle School, Parker Middle School, continued that process, even though had they taken the test the year prior and maybe worked their way out of it, the state said, you know what, we'll keep Waker with them, they continue to work with us in the district. So why administer the assessments? Mr. Cabral said, we did not receive any flexibility from the federal government. You had to take the test, but then Massachusetts said, well, we'll adopt, we'll adapt it for our purposes locally, basically the Commonwealth. And again, we talked about the diagnostic purposes versus the whole scale of an autopsy, I guess you'd say. How are these results to be used? Assessments are supposed to be interpreted and used for improvement purposes at the local level only. Again, I understand we've actually had points of pride where we could stay here in years prior and talk, look how well we did, we outformed District X here, here, and here. They said, look, this is an opportune time to focus on yourself. Comparisons regarding performance of other districts discouraged as districts were confronting unique challenges, and we talked about that, so I don't want to reiterate that. Had we gone back in the Wayback Machine and we talked about those boxes, one of those components for accountability rate was participation rate. And there we have our grade spans, and actually for all the public, it looks at the amount of standardized testing that our district undergoes. And again, this is looking at the spring annual test, it doesn't talk about the November retests that we have at the high school. So there's a lot of assessments taking place in the district. If you notice the participation rates along the right-hand side, we've always had high participation rates. I highlighted the areas in red because the state said, look, you should really be targeting, given all the conditions, you should examine what is going on if the number dips below seven or eighty percent. Those two areas in grade 10, quite an anomaly. Our participation rate this year, 2021, our 10th graders experienced 56 absences and 54 medically excused from assessments. Now, those are all legitimate reasons why students are medically excused. They have to get a doctor's note, right? And we worked through a process. But let's look back a little bit in the perspective down below, from 17th through 19th, we averaged 15 absences and at max, two medically excused. You know, an increase of what, 40, 41 absences? And we knew that was a challenge anyways, as much districts had, challenging with absenteeism, right? And you also had now the medical excuse, an increase of 52. And that's just the reality, right? So this wasn't something we could, we're always addressing attendance, right? That disassociation with the school throughout the whole year, especially the 10th graders, it's difficult, you know, the hopelessness, I guess. But that's something that we will look further in our presentation about how we're addressing absenteeism here. But I thought that that was important to highlight. And now, the comparison between what went on at the state, which is the upper box, and then what happened within Taunton itself, which is down below. This is for the English Language Arts. It compares progress at the state level, looking at two years in our slogan, the 2019 year, the 2018-19 school year, the test in the spring of 19, and 2020-21, which we've just endured. I'd like to draw your attention to the middle column where you see the colors. The ME, and I'll go through the columns, along the left-hand side, you'll notice that those are the grade levels. Along the top bar, you see not meeting, partially meeting, M and E, meeting and exceeding. And those are the exceeding the benchmarks of the standards at that grade level. Obviously, what we always want to do is the ME, which is the middle column, those students who are meeting or exceeding the expectations for grade level standards. Now, looking at the state itself and the variance, in grade three, the state entirely noticed a six percent drop in their meeting and exceeding categories of students. And I won't read each one item with you, but notice that obviously, what we all thought across the Commonwealth, you would see a decrease in student performance, with the exception of grade 10, where the numbers of students percentage-wise, meeting or exceeding those standards for 10th grade English, actually increased by three percent. Down below is Taunton's performance. Granted, we can always improve, we must improve, but have noticed the color changes there, where yes, we had an eight percent drop in our meeting exceeding numbers in grade three, but then we saw an increase over the state, right? When you look at the state had a three percent loss, we had a one percent gain. We stayed set in grade five, two percent growth in sixth grade, one percent in seventh, a loss of eight in eighth, a loss, when you look at the giant span, three through eighth entirely, three, where the state had six, and then 10th grade locally, plus seven percent of our students shifted into the meet and exceeding category. Again, it's important to note the following, that prior to the pandemic, our scores were not aligned with the state performance, okay? So we lagged behind state performance at that time. And although their performance dropped as well, ours improved, we still have a lot of work to go to close the gap. So as much as I'm an optimist, and I'd like to come up here and say, you know, we're doing great, the reality is, we have a lot of work to do. I'm not discouraged by the work, we're all hard workers, our educators are phenomenal. The amount of professional development they took place from the summertime consistently to improve their practices to support our students is phenomenal. So it should be noted that yes, we might have outperformed the state, we still have a lot of work to go. So that was for English Language Arts. Now math. Mathematics across the Commonwealth, again, the upper tier chart, double-digit regression across the state with the exception of 10th grade. Down below, Taunton Public Schools, we have double-digit losses as well. Again, it aligns to the impact that the Commonwealth saw, but again, where our starting point was, we had a gap to begin with, right? So we have a lot of work to do. M and E, meeting or exceeding the grade level standard, and that's key, because the curriculum in which the resources that we provide our educators has to be grade level standard-specific. Because what we have to do is we have to provide just-in-time supports from that starting point of that grade level standard versus, as much as we want to say, if I have a fifth grade student, but they're only capable right now of only fourth grade standards, doesn't mean you back up the fourth grade standards, because we know in the spring, that exam is going to have fifth grade standards with which they're going to have to meet or exceed. So it's standards-based instruction, grade level materials, supporting our teachers in the changing, the altering of their teaching practices, because human nature is, and they're great people, and they want to see students succeed, and we have to have them succeed, but we have to provide just-in-time supports to make sure we stay at that grade level bar, rather than trying to meet them where they're at, because they will never catch up. And I guess I'll use this analogy, Mr. DeMello may be quicker than I. So if we're in a race, and he started the race at that small table in the middle of the room, and I started back here where Mrs. Moynihan is, and we started, and we kept in stride, I would never close the gap between myself and Mr. DeMello. I would have to accelerate my pace to catch up with Mr. DeMello. And that's what we're doing now in the district. It is not a one-month fix, it's not a 10-month fix, because that's our school year. It's a multi-year effort that everyone is going to have to undergo, and I need to say this clearly, we need to be patient as a community, as our educators, because we're transforming our instructional practices to meet the needs of our students, employing grade level-specific, standards-based curriculum. And then we have science as well. Again, if you look at fifth grade science, right, again, a year and a half away from really true science instruction, which was done in packets. So when you look at our students now in classrooms and exploring with hands on materials, and they were doing it with packets, you know, it goes to say that obviously, we're going to see regression. What I tried to provide here is say, what was the path that we were on prior to COVID? So you see on the left-hand side, spring 17, 18 school year, spring in the middle column, 18, 19 school year, the 19, 20 is missing, that was the no exam year, and then this current school year. If you notice, it tends to stay the same, right? We saw, obviously, based upon the other chart, we see more students not meeting expectations in the 2021 year, and the loss of those students who are exceeding, obviously, the pillars, I guess you'd say, are shifting more to the right, what we don't want to see, versus building up more blues than yellows and grays. And again, with math, more dramatically with math, right? Should be important to know that this year truly is the first year, although we had the Wonders curriculum, right, at the K5 level, which is new, highly qualified, Superintendent Cabral made a strategic decision not to adopt the new version of Wonders, because it wasn't grade level rigorous, that we paused on that, we brought it in during the pandemic year, and that was the first year implementing it. So this year really is the first full year of implementation of the Wonders curriculum that we have students in front of our teachers, right? And I would say, because there were some digital resources in that, that that is probably what contributed to that first slide, we saw some green in those younger grade levels of our ELA performance, of why our students may have done better at that time. Again, hypothesis, but we do know, if we have high-quality curriculum materials, the likelihoods will see success. And we also saw our growth in 10th grade, which has been used, again, with Dr. Buckley and her department, with StudySync, digitally-based, right? High-quality materials, again, we showed, we demonstrated some green, which is some positive movement. Again, it takes time, because we're building a system for the long haul, not the sprint. And then, and then obviously with science and such, right? Now, we hear a lot of words about the accelerated roadmap. DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary, had talked about accelerate learning, accelerate learning. What's important to note is this, accelerate learning doesn't mean you give the students more work right now to catch them up. It's what I alluded to before when I used the analogy of Mr. DeMello and I in that race, and just-in-time supports, that we realize, we knew that our students were going to be behind, there were going to be gaps in their learning, right? So our accelerated learning means you teach grade level standards and then provide just-in-time supports scaffolding to provide students the access ramp to catch up with their peers who might be at grade level standards performance right now. So DESI, in conjunction with the new teacher project, is working with districts across the Commonwealth to really implement this accelerated roadmap, and it broke it out in phases. We're always used to saying, well, tell me what to do now, what's the next step? So you have across the top of the page, four phases that they identify, the diagnostic and planning component, before the first day of school, '21. So that goes back to the work that we started last year, making sure we had high-quality curriculum materials. What about summer school? Okay, which students do we have to reach out in terms of, well, I'll stop there, because I want to go to where, all that pre-work that goes into when the students, when we opened up the doors in September, late August. Phase two, September to October, the launch. Phase three, progress monitoring, November, we're in it now, through April '22. How are students performing? What are we doing? Do you know how they're performing? What are we trying to do to elevate their performance? And then obviously, phase four is the reflection and planning period for the next year. It's going to be continuous, and I would say, not for next year, but also what's going to happen over the summertime and the fall. So along the left-hand side talks about like three horizontal pillars or columns that has to go on throughout the whole year. Sense of belonging. We have to develop a sense of belonging. We always heard, we heard about students have been separated from school. How are they going to be when they come back, right? We knew students would struggle hands down. Those students who struggled before COVID, those gaps exacerbated even more. We have students now who moved in from other districts, who sadly, and for whatever reason, their districts did not go, some of the large urban areas, did not go in person, and they were hybrid. So really, you're looking at almost a year and a half, some of our youngest students were not even in a school building, who now showed up now, how do I, I'm new to a district, I'm new to a building, I don't know anybody to begin with, and now my social skills have been dampened by this whole break, what do we do? So we're seeing a lot of that mental health needs taking place. So that first, you know, in the summertime, what PD can we offer and such, the hard work that we did here, I'm jumping ahead about the bringing in adjustment counselors and stuff, how do we build a sense of belonging for our students? And the launch, making sure the first month of school, the supports are in place, how do we progress monitor that? And I won't read everyone, but talk about, okay, so which students are struggling behaviorally? What are we doing to set them up with student support team meetings? Those meetings are taking place, they were started up piloted by Dr. Watt and Kathy Perry, then Mulcahy and other elementaries, those then expanded out. Our EL with Director of English Language Learners, Delilah Mendoza and her team, are working student support meetings for the students of second language, because other than, their primary language is not English, making sure that we're not over-identifying them for supports that they don't need, but making sure that the supports they need be successful where they are, are in place. And obviously, we're going to look back and reflect on this. So we have the sense of belonging, monitoring, understanding in real time, and we'll see later on that we have assessments taking place. Our MAP testing, which takes place, well, September, we're going to hit another phase in January, and then in June going out the door, along with our unit and other formative assessments, our DIBL assessments and such. We just undertook a pilot, it's called Early Bird, for our kindergarten students, it's internet-based, with a screening, not only for where they are and their letter fluency and such, and prior part of comprehension and stuff, but more importantly, whether or not we see evidence of the potential of dyslexia. So, and that's something that our educators are looking at piloting this current year, so it's ongoing work, trying to understand where our students are. But that's the other part. You might know where they are, but what are we going to do about it? And that talks about the strong instruction. You know, culturally responsive curriculum materials. And I know we hear the word culturally responsive, what does that mean? It basically means this, every student comes to us in our way with some type of knowledge that we can tap into, and it's up to us to figure out how we can tap into that prior knowledge to boost their learning and build connection with their experiences with the curriculum material. And so that's ongoing work with, not only we provide professional development, and educators are going outside the district, as they normally do provide professional development, but we've also embedded in buildings, professional development opportunities in terms of consultants with Looney Math, who has had over a six-year relationship with the district, with targeted buildings, is now across the district, K to 12, where either monthly or bi-monthly, they're going in and not only partaking in data meetings, part of our monitoring, understanding with the use of assessments, but also going to classrooms, modeling classrooms, modeling instruction, providing advice, working with common planning time, and of course, through the efforts of the school committee with bringing back the instructional coaches, they're also on board, assisting in the data review, modeling of lessons, and working within classrooms with our instructors. So we've, are fully on board with implementing this acceleration roadmap. So, and now the action steps taken, that big graphic on the right-hand side is actually our assessment schedules for K7, that's an exemplar we would show you. As with all things Taunton Public Schools, sometimes we don't do a good job of advertising what we do. We've had an assessment schedule in place for a number of years. Just now, it seems like, okay, when they said you should have an assessment schedule, we already have that. So it's good to know that that work has already been ongoing, that isn't new to Taunton Public Schools. So let's look at the action steps. First of all, our greatest attributes are human resources to people, and what this school committee did, first on the front end with hard discussions and debates, but also what you put in place, the increase in adjustment counselors, increase in community facilitators for that homeschool connectivity, school psychologists, obviously, it goes without saying, whether it's not only consulting with teachers and administrators of how to potentially deal with students, but also the testing component. Team chairs, again, they facilitate those meetings, those IEP meetings, whether initials or a follow-up or annuals, but that also frees up now our guidance counselors to do more intervention work, small group activities with our students. The increase in assistant principals at the elementary and middle school levels, it's been a profound effect, because it's actually allowed principals, added assistant principals to now attend data meetings on a regular basis, and then what we all experience, whether we're educators, administrators, cafeteria staff, custodians, absences. So now, when one administrator is out, you still have two in the building, where at other times, central office, Superintendent Cabral would say, you know, Ms. Moynihan, can you go to this building? Ms. Perry, can you go to this one? Barata, can you go to this building? Because we wouldn't want to leave any building unattended. So we have that flexibility. Coherence and collaboration is huge. Again, we talked about the high-quality curriculum materials, the Luster of Math, which we have now with the K12, Open Saiad, we've had a lot of talk about that, and we talked about standard works and how they came in and talked about how phenomenal our work has been about the implementing that. Our Wonders, ELA K5, StudySync, six through 12, and then the MindUp curriculum, which again, work was already in play before COVID, with Kathy Perry, Dr. Linda Watt, and a whole host of teachers and guidance counselors and stuff, who vetted multiple curricula to determine what is best for our students. And then they took that material and embedded it online, so that educators could go in their room with video clips. So it also increased our teacher capacity, because otherwise, we'd have to give everybody counseling opportunities, and you know, how do you deliver that type of stuff? Where this is really ease of use, high-quality, targeted, and the lessons were actually ground out of not only the MindUp curriculum, but also the CELUS data, the data that we collected a year and a half ago, when as a pilot, Dr. Watt and Superintendent Cabral and Ms. Moynihan accessed the grant, in which we piloted this exam, and we have the software too, which we actually could track students. So it's grounded in the evidence that we have in district. K7 schedule and data means, you see along the right-hand side when those occur in color codes, instructional walkthroughs, we really put an impetus now of, we have to be in classrooms, not evaluating teachers, because there's two different things. There's the evaluation of a teacher and instructional walkthroughs. We're going in classrooms, looking at look-for's. How are the materials that we've purchased in the district, high-quality, being implemented? What are the conversations taking place with the students? That's what we're looking for. A quick example would be the Luster of Mathematics, soft easy step is there's a structure to it, it's a very predictable structure. And as we calibrate our look-for's, as administrators who walk through, we look for that structure as that baby step of, okay, do we have a warm-up activity? Do we have the synthesis taking place? Is there an activity taking place? So we're starting baby steps, but we also need to know that we just can't set it and forget it. This is a garden we're going to plant for multiple years, that we're going to be following up and circling back to, and that means all of us have a hand in making sure that our instruction is top-notch. Again, professional development, the traditional format, which we do, you know, after-school, virtual and such, but also we talked about the embedded PD where we have our coordinators and supervisors, supporting classrooms in real time, and our coaches, instructional coaches, and our consultants, one of which we mentioned earlier was the coaches, and our consultants, one of which we mentioned earlier was the Looney Consulting Firm. Further action steps, big picture, our district strategic plan, which we shared out with this group, this ongoing work. We again met last week with another representative from DESI, honing it down, making it more consumable for all the users, not only the community, but also us as educators, practitioners in the district. School improvement plans, which Superintendent Cabral really voiced and with your support about funding through RSR funds and allocating it. Empowering principals to make decisions and then Holden McConnell with the building level for the improvement of instruction and social emotional status. And then with the monthly principal reports that superintendent has, the educators or the principals directly submitting to him, evidence of what professional development is taking place, how are you using funding? What about your student data? So much so that even the superintendent had us download students' DIBL datas, right, with the elementary grade levels, and then said, you know, provide me this information because when I meet with the principals individually, I'm going to ask what is taking place. So it's that, we don't, we're not going to have any secrets here. We all have to be out there and say, what is taking place? More importantly, what can we do to change the trajectory of our students? And then accessing grants, and you see there are two and three, our summer school expansion, our SELs, which is CELUS I just referred to a few minutes ago, our TAG Ranch, which again is for the statewide system of support. Our secondary virtual online learning was utilized last year for summer school component for those students who, because we had both in-person and virtual summer school options. The Glean Grant, we alluded to earlier, which really was more towards the adoption of high-quality English language arts materials, but we already did that, but we applied for that grant to improve writing in the district. So although we did not expend that entire grant, the money that we did spend, Dr. Sarah Buckley, Becky Coette, and others, we actually worked on what type of writing, implementation of writing programs are we taking place now, which we are working on now, I might say. 1-8 Foundation was actually funding from Elizabeth Palowski to work with the Open Saiad. We always have our federal grants, one, Title I, which is basically reading recovery. Title II is professional development. Title III has to do with English language learner support. And Title IV has to do with the globally speaking of safe school environments. Homeless student support, we access the grant, how best we can support those students, safe and supportive schools, we have an individual grant. We just awarded a Mass Grad Promising Practices Grant, which Taunton Alternative High School, I think it was $20,000 was granted, to further reach out to those students who may have dropped out of Taunton High School, but was in alternative high school, can actually reengage those students, bring them back. And obviously, great work by the high school and Jen Andrews, Andrews in particular, with the FAFSA and Paul Bachmann and the FAFSA completion opportunities last year, where they actually walked families through that process because many of our students are college-eligible, but they have that roadblock or they think they have the roadblock of the financial impact of that, where they actually outshined multiple districts in the completion of the FAFSA documentation. And I'd like to say I had that number at the top of my head, but I don't. But Bridgewater State University, in fact, emailed us and said, you have done outstanding work and the numbers, percentage are going up. So these words aren't hyperbole. We actually have on their end saying, you people did phenomenal, given the circumstances. And then other action steps, internal, internal partnerships, our student support meetings are taking place. Again, I talked about Kathy Perry's work and now working place in the buildings, but also Delilah Mendoza and her team for the English language learner support. Strive, which was normally, was formerly known as High Point, has to do with the counseling or substance abuse counseling opportunities for our students at the high school, which have been embedded in the high school, which continue. And then a opportunity for us that we just got through Mass General Hospital is I Decide, which is a restorative justice type of support for any substance use or abuse or wondering if there is a possibility of substance abuse taking place, that we're collaborating now with Mass General High School, Hospital, which is going to work with middle school and high school and provide counseling opportunities for those educational, I should say, educationally based opportunities in restorative justice in terms of not only will it provide education in the child or self-awareness and what you do, but also, it says also, will provide or gives it avenue for our families to have direct consultation with the support networks at Mass General Hospital. So it's the whole package, not the student, realizing it affects the whole family, not the individual child. So that's a great new opportunity for us. Catapult Tutoring was sponsored by DESI, who's a, Catapult is a third-party vendor that provides tutors K through 8. We focused on the primary grades, K3 in particular, in which we can have tutors and they are going to be coming in. They're hired through them, working with our students. Right now, we have in the works Bennett, Mulcahy, and East Taunton, I believe. Galligan already has their tutors up and running. So it's an additional support. Again, our teachers are working lights-out. This is an additional tutoring opportunities to provide fluency and those basic skill development, which they will use DIBL's data, which matches with ours. So we'll actually see, or we can measure the tangible results and impact of this tutoring opportunity. Again, this is grant funded through DESI. We have the availability to access Title I monies, should other schools want to jump on board. So that's an opportunity that's lurking out there for our students and their families. Again, statewide system of support, not only providing district-level support, but building-based engagement, not only those three schools I mentioned before, Mulcahy, Parker, and Martin, but also they dipped their toe into Taunton High School again, not because accountability rating, because they felt, and we felt, it was unfinished business that started two and a half, three years ago, where, you know, numbers count. And when there was an alteration to the scoring component, the accountability rating, Taunton High School was elevated out of that domain and support was shut down. And we advocated, we should have that continuous support. The team supported it. DESI would not do that, although we tried to replicate the support network that was going in those buildings, we're actively engaged. Now we actually have them at the high school, working with interim principal Mr. Holcomb and Kristin Keenan and coordinators about instruction, scheduling, coursework and such. Again, the new teacher projects is TNTP, which also talks about that accelerated roadmap. They're working with us at district level, where we have a network dealing with not only us, New Bedford, I think Fall River, Brockton, Fitchburg, and other districts across the state collaborate. We also, I also opted the district in for embedded PD where we have a subset working directly with Taunton Public Schools in developing systems of support district-wide to enhance the accelerated roadmap. And again, the Taunton Juvenile Corp, the truancy diversion program that Kathy Perry has run with greatly, still up and running, still trying to engage students and to avoid dropout. And here's some other information that we talked about that, you know, there was a lot of red on those other slides, but you know that our students still did well, still did well. If you look at the first indicator, the SAT combined score was 10,081, that represents 122 students. Four-year graduation rate, that was 545 students. Advanced placement scoring, three to five, 53.2, that's for all subjects, 472 students. Students attending college and universities, 64%, that qualifies for 495 graduates, and that's 317 that attend or make up that 64%. So yes, we had students who struggled and we need to close the gap, but we also noticed, if you remember that slide, 10th grade ELA, the increase in green, that FAFSA completion, our students still are able to access high-quality post-secondary pursuits. So I'd like, thank you very much. I probably talked a little bit too much.
Thank you, Mr. Barada. Appreciate the presentation, very in-depth and certainly more to come. Questions from my colleagues? Ms. Dougherty?
Excuse me. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, Mr. Barada, for that extraordinarily comprehensive presentation, not only on the results of the MCAS testing, such as it was, or also with all of the follow-up kinds of activities that are ongoing. And it is extraordinary to look at three pages listing all of the possibilities that are embraced by the Taunton Public Schools in support of children. I will say, complete transparency, that I have been opposed to the MCAS and continue to be opposed to the MCAS and worked to support legislation that suggested or directed the Department of Education not to administer the MCAS this year for the very reasons that we knew, because we knew what the outcome was going to be. Children would lose learning time from a half a year up to a year and a half, as these data points show us. And so I would hope that the public doesn't take that information and let it, it should not suggest that the Taunton Public Schools has fallen down on the job because it is a condition of all children across the Commonwealth and across the nation as well. I was in a conversation with an elementary school principal, it was a nice conversation, you know, it was, how you doing? How are the children? What about the masking? All of that kind of thing. And is it so, I said, that you see that your children are a year, year and a half behind in terms of the learning curve? And what is it that you're doing at your school to help to support that? And then she told me that they were working through after-school programs two days a week, I think, I think that's what it was. So is that a universal application across the district? It may have crept into one of the lists of things that you provided for us, but I'm wondering if there is a kind of a baseline of expectation at the elementary level, middle school level, high school, to help to give students extra support? And then obviously, the uniqueness of the population would define what else you would do beyond that baseline. So that is my question. Thank you.
So I'll be real, this is going to be like one of the fastest answers I've ever given you, Carol. This is going to be one of the fastest answers I've ever given you, Carol. Yes. Yeah, so again, part of the, and now I'll, now I'll make it a long answer. As Mr. Barada mentioned, this is a three-year plan. DESI, the federal government provided us with funding over a three-year period to address the learning needs of our students and also the social-emotional learning needs of our students. So by funding the school improvement plans, our principals are being very creative. They are thinking about how they can utilize the existing technology. So you may see a combination of some in-person, you may see a combination of some virtual, you may see weekends, vacations. We're going to run another robust summer school program. So the expectation is, we have the resources, so let's work to address the individual needs of our kids. And when I meet with our principals, using the revamped monthly principals' plan, the conversation is, how are we improving or how are we addressing our student needs? Again, academically and also their mental health.
Just if I might follow up, I just have to say, my bottom line is that in talking with various people, parents, teachers, children, people like Hector, I think that every single stakeholder is bearing up, moving very quickly to help to support our children. And I think that we are all together pushing forward and supporting teachers particularly who have stepped up in very positive ways, children who are coping very well, and Hector certainly can speak for himself in that regard, and families who are understanding that their children from time to time will be frustrated, they will be frustrated, but that at the end of the day, we're all rowing that boat together. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to either Mr. Barada or the superintendent. I understand that we have the two or three years that we, the analogy you use, you know, you're here and you're here and we have to catch up. That's fine for the ninth graders, the 10th graders. I'm concerned about our seniors that are going to be graduating in about six months. I haven't heard much about that. Where are we at with our graduating seniors right now as far as the learning loss that they also suffered? Are they on track? Are our graduation rates going to, are we expecting our graduation to be less than our traditional? I mean, ever since I've been on the community, I think our graduation rates have been trending higher. So do we have a numbers to support that? If you don't have it today, we can come back at a future date.
Yeah, that's, unfortunately, we don't have a tool where we can provide, unless it's our own formative assessments, we don't have a MAP tool like we have at the elementary and middle school level to get that data. But that's something that we can bring at a future meeting. Probably would make sense to have the high school administration and some of the high school guidance staff provide us with some data, some updates on the work that we're doing to address the needs of our upperclassmen. But what we, what we also knew going into the pandemic, when we were getting ready to assess our kids, we knew that the older children, the children in the higher grades, were going to adapt. And again, I'm not saying they all did well because there were students who struggled, and I can speak to that. But what we did see, and the data does show it, that at the younger grades, especially at third grade, who took the test for the first time, they didn't do as well. The older the student, it seemed like they were a little more prepared, a little better prepared to deal with the pandemic, but it doesn't mean there are, there are not gaps that we still need to address. So what we'll do is we'll schedule a presentation probably sometime in the new year, once we have half a year of data, which is probably a good benchmark to see where our kids are and try to provide some projections on where we feel or how we feel we'll be. One of the things that we are doing at the high school, because we identified a need, is we're running an after-school credit recovery program. So we still have the alternative high school, which we all know the work that they do there, which is excellent. We're also running a credit recovery program to help students who maybe slipped through the cracks the last 18 months to make up those credits so that they're on pace to graduate come June. But we'll provide a more thorough presentation in the new year.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, if I may, that's wonderful. And, you know, we're coming up to the holiday season where the kids are going to be going home for a little bit of a stretch, then we have a February school vacation and April school vacation. So I think it's, to me at least, it's imperative that we try to get some numbers of where these seniors are because they still have opportunities to make up that gap. It may not be two or three years, but it would be two or three weeks that could help them. So I don't want any student to say, Mr. DeMello wants us to, you know, do schoolwork during vacation. That's not the, I just want to make sure that they're at an equal stance as far as going into their next life. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, since Mr. Barada mentioned it, regarding the applications to Bridgewater, I just pulled up an email from February of '21 where Associate Dean Todd Adiatus reached out to Mr. Bachmann and said that Taunton High School has bucked the national trend, at least in terms of applications submitted to BSU. I can't thank you enough for all the support you and your staff are providing to your students in what is an extraordinarily difficult year. This is exceptional. So just to reaffirm, Mr. Barada and the superintendent, our guidance council staff, our teachers, our maintainers, whatever it is to educate these kids, it worked, it's been working. So, you know, hats off to everyone involved. So since Mr. Barada mentioned that, I pulled up the email. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Mr. Palowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to, I apologize for losing my voice here, so I'll try to keep it quick. So I appreciate all the hard work that we're doing. It's really impressive when you see everything laid out there, all the initiatives that we're taking and that we're utilizing this data, putting things in place to help our students achieve. And I appreciate the report out on our post-secondary success, you know, the students graduating, going on to college. I wondered, do we have plans in the future to take it a step further and try to analyze how we are preparing these kids for success long-term? So it's one thing to get the kids into college. I wonder how many of these kids are completing college, you know, graduating four years later? Or even are students going through, you know, like business courses and whatnot? Do we have any way to analyze how many kids actually follow and get into a career on the path that they've chosen? Because at the end of the day, our whole job is we're preparing these kids for life after school. So is there a way to look into the future and see how successful our whole culmination has been?
So I would say that would probably be part of the presentation that we'll develop with the high school administration to see what tools we have in place. I'm thinking, first person I'm thinking of is Jen Andrews, working with her and the high school administration to get us that information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Any other comments? Questions? Mr. Barada, thank you. Over the last 18 months, I know the hard work that's been taking place. And once we get the kids back at school, that's really where the rubber meets the road and hopefully, we should continue to dig ourselves out. But I'll tell you, there's a lot of good things going on in those classrooms and I think the proof will be forthcoming every, every six months or so, once these presentations continue. And you see the data, the data will really tell it. So keep up the good work. Superintendent Cabral?
I just want to, again, I want to I just wanna, again, I wanna compliment Mr. Barata for his hard work, the coordinators who support Mr. Barata, teachers, administrators, and also our community. It's been, it's been a hard road, but I, I do, I do believe with the curriculum that we have in place, the professional development and support that we're providing our staff, that I do believe our district is positioned very well to be very successful moving forward, pre-K through 12, as we continue to align our practices. And that's a testament to Mr. Barata and all the folks that work with him, and being persistent in making sure that we have that through line pre-K through 12. So thank you, Chris, and please pass my thanks to all the folks who helped support you as well.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, letter G, evaluation of the superintendent. I'm going to read the, the letter first, and then we'll go into the evaluation tool. Be the same process as last year. I'll go around and call on everyone and comment, and then we can decide on how to grade, for lack of a better term, designate the categories. And this is, on Wednesday, November 17, 2021, we'll be discussing the process for the 2020, 2021 evaluation of superintendent schools, which will be conducted at a televised Taunton School Committee meeting on December the 1st, 2021, today. As you know, under Massachusetts General Law, the superintendent of schools is the only public school employee required to be evaluated in open session. I have provided you with a copy of the evaluation tool, which is updated, which was updated in July 2019. There was six standards under the previous tool, relationship with the school committee, instructional leadership, management and operations, budget management, professional culture, and family and community partnership. I'd like the previous tool, the updated tool that has been, that has been reduced to include four standards, instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. Please be advised that you do not need to complete the evaluation tool at this time, or, or at all. I am distributing these evaluation tools to inform all school committee members of the process, well, well in advance of the superintendent's evaluation. This is what I read at the last meeting, so I'm gonna continue to read the whole meeting, so it goes on to what, what I'm gonna say tonight. The superintendent will provide each school committee member with a hard copy of his self-evaluation in advance of the meeting. Tonight, December 1st, 2021, you should have come prepared to share your thoughts on the four areas of responsibility. Please be aware that if you bring a completed evaluation form to the table, it could be considered part of the public record under the open meeting law. As has been past practice, we'll be working on a consensus evaluation that represents a majority's view. Here is what you can expect tonight, December 1st, 2021. Number one, the chair will give an overview of the process, which I just did. As a group, we will discuss each of the four categories. As a group, for each category, we will discuss each expectation, determine an overall rating, exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. The school committee secretary will take notes and create one comprehensive evaluation. Just let me state that the, Mrs. Devine, Mrs. Fagan, and myself will be taking notes. And then we will have the ladies at the front office will then take the transcript of this meeting and the comments and make hard copies. And then when Mrs. Fagan and myself get together, we'll make, we'll put a comprehensive evaluation tool together, populate the tool, and put the comments in with, of course, whatever the vote is tonight for each category. There's these individuals who collaborate with the Taunton School Committee Chairperson and Secretary, and a final draft will be submitted to the Taunton School Committee for review and final approval. And that will take place at the next meeting, which will be on December, which is our last meeting of the year, which is December 15. So we'll have that evaluation tool in the packet, completed populated evaluation tool with the comments in the packet for the next meeting. And please see attached evaluation rubric and the superintendent's self-evaluation tool template. First category, superintendent's performance rating for standard one, instructional leadership. Description, the educational leader promotes learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. Expectations, A, curriculum, ensures that all instructional staff design effective and rigorous standards based on units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes. B, instruction, ensures that practices in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content and quality of work, excuse me, of effort and work, engage all students in a personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests, and levels of readiness. C, assessment, ensures that all principals and administrators facilitate practices that propel personnel to use a variety of formal and informal methods and assessments to measure students' learning, growth, understanding, and make necessary adjustments to their practice when students are not learning. D, evaluations, ensure effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions. E, data-informed decision-making. Use multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, including state, district, and school assessment results and growth data, to inform school and district goals and improve organizational performance, educator effectiveness, and student learning. F, student learning, demonstrate expected impact of student learning based on multiple measures of student learning, growth, and achievement, including student progress on common assessments and statewide student growth measures where available. Overall rating of standard one, instructional leadership, the educator, the education leader promotes learning and growth of all students and success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. I'm going to go right around the room, and we can have any comments, and then we'll, we can talk about the subcategories.
Just a point of information, Mr. Chairman, is it required by the Department of Education that the chair read each one of these categories, expectations for each one of the areas?
No, I wouldn't say it's, it's required, and it's...
So I'm wondering, I mean, I don't know what my colleagues think about it, but if we could, if you could just sort of highlight them, and then we could come?
Yeah, I could do that.
Unless it's for the edification of our...
No, I think, I, I just was kind of being a straight ruler here, and...
You did a nice job doing it, but I was just wondering.
We don't have to do that. I, I thought, I thought the best thing to do was just read the description of the entry, entry description, and then go on from there, because we've all done it before. So I could do that for the rest of the categories. And I, and I appreciate that, because it's good feedback.
My colleagues don't...
Yeah. I have no problem with that. Category one, we'll start with Mrs. Fagan, if, comments, and then we'll go right around the room. And, you know, and I'll also call on my colleague, Mrs. Almeida, who's joining us by remote technology. Mrs. Fagan?
Um, Mr., Susan, they don't have the P down here at all.
Well, that, it, it...
It's proficient, right?
Yeah, on this particular...
I don't think any of them...
Yeah, it got left off by accident.
Okay.
On the copy and paste, I noticed that. But I, I, that's why I read it from the original letter, because it was on there. And it's on the, it's on the front page, on the front page. It just happened that in the sub-pages, it wasn't, it wasn't on there. But it is part of the, it is part of the evaluation.
Okay.
The three, the four that I said, exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, and unsatisfactory.
Mr. Chairman, point of information, on the actual rubric?
Yep.
All four categories do exist. Do you have a different copy, Mrs. Fagan?
Oh, I have, I have two copies. I have the one we got the first time, unless it got...
I'm sorry, Ms. DeMello, did you say it has it on yours?
Yeah, all four categories exist, yes. You...
Oh, they don't have it at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, I think she was just saying down at the bottom.
No, it's had at the bottom.
Down at the bottom in the comments, it just, it, the copy and paste, it just didn't put it in. It's on the original, on the instructions in the front, and I just went by the...
All right, misunderstood.
But it's there.
All right, thank you.
Because the category, the category is there for it. So it, just the wording was missing. Go ahead, Mrs. Fagan. Any comments?
Yeah, I was, I was looking over the stuff that we have here, and just thinking about what a difficult year this has been for everybody, including the superintendent. He, we had so many things to deal with. And to be honest with you, I, I feel that, given the things that were presented and how the whole year shook out, I have a real difficult time, you know, giving things like needs improvement or unsatisfactory, because we just got dealt a hand of cards that were really difficult to deal with. So I, as far as I'm concerned, everything that we did was really in the, what we thought was the best interest of children, that when we went through all those different types of, when I was looking at it, the remote, the some there, some not, I, I don't know how anybody learned anything this year, to be honest with you, with the, you're smiling, because you know, the, the confusion that it created, you know, between having kids at home. Some kids never came back. I, I remember talking to the athletic director one day, and he said every day there were about 500 kids that were just out. They just weren't there. And I, I can't imagine that, you know, given all the things that we did to, to make education available to kids. So we, we went with the remote, we went with some of the kids being there, we gave them an awful lot of leeway. I, to be honest with you, I can't see not giving him anything but exemplary for this, because I think it was a very difficult task. I can't be judging, am I happy about the way everything went? No. I'm, I'm sure we all feel that way. When we look at the test scores, we feel the same way. We go, ugh. But it's, it's not the fault of anybody here, it's not for lack of trying. Because we, we met with, we met with different staff that was affected by this. We tried to make as many accommodations as we, as we could. I mean, it was everything from even running buses, you know, when we were gonna have sporting events. I, it was really, I don't like, well, I like Greek mythology, but it was a Herculean task. So I personally, in this, this particular thing, I would, I'm all set with all exemplars from me, because I don't know if anybody could have done better. You know, it just, it was such a difficult, difficult year for all of us.
Herculean event, I like that. Mr., Mr., thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Mr. Fiori?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not even taking into consideration the exceptional circumstances of the past year and a half or so, I think a lot of what goes into this part of the evaluation is something that's been this superintendent's strong point throughout his administration. I think we've been seeing a lot of meetings and brainstorming and other things, dealing with these different areas in curriculum and instruction and this assessment. And I think it's been an ongoing process that just got extra added onto it in the, in the intervening time. And I think he's been exemplary in these areas, not making an exception for difficult times. And I think the steady hand of his administration throughout times just made it that much easier to get through the more difficult times. I also agree that in all of these areas, performance has been exemplary.
Thank you, Mr. Fiori. Mr. Palowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm gonna give you my opening disclaimer for my review. My expectations are very high, so it's difficult to exceed them. So I don't really give out exceed expectations. And the more that I work with Mr. Cabral, the higher my expectations are, because I'm, I'm honestly impressed with how he's performed over the past couple of years. So in this particular area, instructional leadership, my, my grading is proficient across the board, and I'm happy to say that I've seen a marked improvement in this. I pulled out my evaluation from, my notes from last year. So number one, I'm very excited about the new curriculums for ELA, math, and science, particularly the design of phenomena-based learning, and, and really new ways to engage all of our students and all different types of learners. Because from my perspective of working in industry, that's, that's what we need to be teaching our kids. We need to teach them how, how to learn. I'm very excited about all this stuff. But at the same time, I see what a huge ask this is for not only our teachers and our staff, but for our students to take on these new curricula at the same time of trying to recover from, from the pandemic, the ongoing pandemic. And I do appreciate how, it, it's clear to me that the leadership team understands this with all the resources that we put into professional development to help them along with that. So very impressed there. And number two, we actually have a strategic plan this year. So, you know, last year, I, I put needs improvement on this, because a big portion of instructional leadership is that strategic plan. We didn't have it in place last year. We have it now. So I'm very excited to see how this goes along. And I really appreciate that Mr. Cabral sees this as a living document that we will be working on as we go along. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Mrs. DeMello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for everybody's knowledge, I always prepare a written statement, and I provide that statement to the superintendent a few days in advance of today's meeting. And we have an opportunity to talk about my comments. And at the conclusion of the meeting, since this is on the table, I will hand this to Ms. Devine, and she can make copies for all my colleagues for their, for their records, too. So from 1A to 1F, I gave the superintendent exemplary for all categories, and I'll just read my statement since it's right in front of me. "With so many uncertainties during the last 18 months, I feel that Superintendent Cabral has performed within the DESI guidelines and recommendations throughout the pandemic. I believe he and we, school committee, as a body, learned so much, and the experience has only helped us better improve curriculum and instruction for every student. I would hope that moving forward, we learn from the past, act in the now while understanding our future path. I also believe that the superintendent's strategic plan will help guide the district. This is work in progress," as Mr. Palowski just referred to. "And I also struggle with the following. I also need to understand why curriculum is not uniform and so diverse among schools and grade levels. For months, the district has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars from different vendors, and I'm still struggling with the benefit or ROI, return on investment, in this diverse purchasing practice." And thinking about that, I, I could probably understand that it was work in progress during these last 18 months, and one curriculum may not have worked for a certain grade level in one school but could have worked in the other due to extenuating circumstances such as hotspots and Chromebooks and so forth and so on. But I think we'll have a future conversation. So once again, 1 through F is exemplary for the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Mrs. Almeida, are you with us via remote technology? Mrs. Almeida?
She's blanking.
Mrs. Almeida, are you a...
She says she can't hear. She can't hear it.
Are you on mute?
Everyone sounds like you're underwater.
Do you have any comments about, number one, instructional leadership?
I think that the superintendent has done a very good job with instructional leadership, especially given the fact that last year we had low classes in school, so, you know, midsemesters, because of the fact of the COVID. And I think that he... because of the fact of the COVID. And I think that he made sure that the teachers had a lot of professional development to be able to take care of us students and, and give them the instructions that they needed. I know a lot of people had problems with computers and Chromebooks and those kinds of things, and it all kind of worked out in the end. I think basically he did a very good job with everything. I know it was difficult. I know we spent a lot of hours trying to decide how we were going to present the subject areas to the, to the students, and it worked out very well, in my opinion. I think we have to see what happens this year now that everybody's back in school. But I would think overall, I would say the superintendent did a very good job. Thank you.
Mrs. Almeida, I missed the beginning of, did you say you, you rated them exemplary on all, on all, all of the categories in one?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, what?
I didn't hear the beginning of your statement. Did you say that you rated them exemplary on all of the categories in number one?
Well, I think curriculum, I would rate, rate him exemplary. Instruction, I can't really talk about that. I know that he did make an effort to make sure that everyone did their job correctly. So, yeah, I would say I would give him exemplary on all, all areas.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Miss Dougherty.
Thank you very much. And so it's a pleasure for me to be last, not first, because hearing the comments of my colleagues has been very important to me in terms of their perspective. So what I'm about to say is universal across this entire evaluation, and it is first and foremost a reiteration of what my colleagues have said, that I would give the superintendent an A+ or, in this instance, an EE. Exceeds expectation for working with his staff, families, and with our students all during the pandemic. When you think about the added burden, I guess, pleasantly accepted of providing meals, providing packets, providing Chromebooks, making sure that teachers are in touch with families, of making sure that the remote learning was reaching as many, if not all, of our students in the most positive ways, and all of the things that have never been taken up by a superintendent, at least in, not since 1917, I guess, since the great pandemic. PP, getting enough PP, masky things, and making sure that our nurses are addressing the kinds of things that they need to, need to address. So all of that was an absolute essential aspect of keeping the Taunton Public Schools moving forward and our children and families engaged. So I think that that's a, we should have had a whole page with goals in that respect. He has managed very well. I have to say, as I look at the first section, that some of the areas have been difficult to grade only because we have to make, or I have had to make some assumptions about what is happening. And I look particularly at the, well, I look at all of them. So the first one, all instruct, ensuring that all instructional staff design effective and rigorous standards-based units. I have to assume that that is happening. We have, we're not always, obviously, we're not always privy to the day-to-day work that goes on in the school system. That's not our role to be sitting there in the school watching what our teachers are doing, watching what our leadership is doing. So from sitting in this school committee chair, unless we are informed of that kind of activity, we, we wouldn't know. Mister Barata does try to inform us as much as possible. Mister Cabral does. And bringing in various staff persons to make those reports is also very important. Another one under C, use a variety of formal and informal methods and assessments to measure student learning growth and understanding. Again, I have not personally witnessed that except for our endless conversations about MCAS. But those student, teacher-designed, school-based assessments do happen. We don't always hear reports of what the outcome of those are because the reports mostly around testing comes on the annual MCAS assessment, much as was given to us this evening. So that's very hard to, we have to assume that it's going on, I think, in positive ways. The next one, data-informed decision-making, using multiple sources of evidence related to student learning. We are informed from time to time that that is going on. But again, I don't personally have firsthand information of that, so we might want to think going forward and that, that providing more of that kind of information that helps to inform the school committee around student progress and curriculum. And I think someone mentioned that, Mister DeMello mentioned it regarding MCAS and, and what's going on, measuring student success at the half-year and then measuring student success at the end of the year. That's very, very important. So in the overall, I think that the school committee needs to have regular and deep discussion about all of those items above so that we can better appreciate that behind-the-scenes work that these goals are describing is going on and what the outcomes of those goals are. So that notwithstanding, it's hard work. And so I, I give you an EE, superintendent, in that regard, because there is no evidence for me to do otherwise. So thank you. Thank you very much, Mister Silliman.
Thank you, Miss Dougherty. I have a few comments and on instructional leadership, standard number one. It all comes down to instruction under this category, and it was a tough year for instruction. We had three forms of learning. We had remote learning, we had hybrid learning, and we had in-person learning. And as someone that was as close as possible to all those decision-makings and inside working with my colleagues on you today to work out with our, with our teachers' union what was going on in the classroom and how those assessments and how all of that was going to work. I'm, I'm pretty amazed that we made it through it and with a steady hand that we did. It, 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 one thing that, that I'm, I also see, and this happened the year before, but again, even, even this year, each one of the schools, the principal, assistant principals, guidance counselors, they can assess and they can get right down to each student in each classroom and understand almost on an individual basis are their own individual needs. And, and it's remarkable, the system that we have in place to get down in basically individual learning. We have a classroom with 25, 26 students, but yet some are at the top, some are in the middle, some are in the lower end. But we get down to what does an individual student need, and it, it amazes me every time when I hear this and when I see this. So with that all being said, through this difficult year for instructional learning and for instructional leadership, I will rate the superintendent on all categories, A, B, C, D, E, and F, as exemplary and an overall rating of exemplary. The, now that we've concluded our comments on standard one, instructional leadership, the chair will entertain a motion for the overall rating. Whatever the, whatever, the chair will entertain a motion to put which standard, exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory.
I would move that we rate the entire category as exemplary.
Motion made. Your second. Second by Miss Dougherty. On the motion, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Second standard, superintendent's performance rating on standard two. Management and operations. Description, the educational leader promotes the lea, the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes a powerful teaching and learning the focus of schooling. Oh, well, wait a minute. That doesn't look right. Hold, excuse me just for a minute. I'm going to read the overall rating, I'm sorry. That did, I think the copy and paste didn't get, do quite well. Management and operation, the educational leader promotes learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, effective, and efficient learning environment using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing, and scheduling. We'll start again to my right, Mrs. Fagan.
I thought you were going to go to the next person.
We don't have to. You want me to?
Yes.
Okay. We'll start with Mister Fiori on this one.
Well, I think that this particular category is this superintendent's strong point. I've known him his whole administrative career in this system. I know the kind of efficiencies and philosophies he displayed as a principal. And then the eight years he's spent as, well, as our bean counter, our organizational and systemic person. And I think this is the area where he's probably designed his leadership style and leadership philosophy in the most. Creating systems and environments, dealing with things like law, ethics, and policies. I think of some of the challenges we've been faced with, the information on difficulties that have happened with individuals or with, or with particular schools or whatever. And I've always found him to be on top of these areas, and if he doesn't do things in them himself, himself, he delegates or encourages others to, to do these things for him. And I, I really think, and certainly coming to human resources management and development where he completely revamped that department just this past year. I think we have an exemplary superintendent who is really an example to superintendents across the Commonwealth in this regard.
Thank you, Mister Fiori. And I'm sorry, did you have a, a rating on this category?
Exemplary.
Thank you. Mister Palowski.
Thank you, Mister Chairperson. So again, in this category, I'm, I'm happy to report that I've seen a marked improvement based on my evaluation from last time. So on the fiscal systems, I, I'm really impressed with the work that you guys have done this past year. Y'all secured the bag. Like you, you went for every grant, funding, anything that we could get, and you, you really, you put it in the areas that we need. You put the, you, you created positions, you, you hired people, you put them in position to help our students where, where they needed most. So I really appreciate that. Laws, ethics, policies, you guys do a great job of that. You guys, you guys know the law, always conducting yourself and in an ethical manner with, with the students, with the families, with the staff. Scheduling management of information systems, I'm really excited of the, the effort that we're putting into revamping the scheduling at the high school. It's had the same schedule since I graduated a million years ago, and I think, I think looking at all these different options, bringing in the consultants, we can come up with something that is a, a smart schedule that's really going to help all the different types of learning that we have. Human resources and management, again, as my colleague Mister Fury said, you revamped your human resources department. It's great. I was really impressed with the process that we went through of hiring the, the Director of Special Education. You know, Mrs. Moynihan is an excellent choice, and you probably could have just chosen her and appointed her. But I think the fact that you developed a committee of stakeholders and community members and went through the whole process of interviewing and casting a wide net and going through, I think it was 11 different candidates, that just strengthens, that strengthens her position, in my opinion. So I would like to see, you know, more of that where we're hire, we're hiring these critical positions. You know, because I, I, we're in this for the long haul. You know, we want the, we want the best school system we can put together, and the, the personnel is, is important. So, you know, I'd like to see, you know, we have, we have an interim principal at the high school. And I, my, my perception is that Mister Holcomb's doing a great job. I think he's great. But I would definitely like to see us go through the same, you know, committee process because it's, it's not just important what we may think as a school committee, it's important for the teachers, the staff, and the, the students at that high school that they're going to get the absolute best they can get for many years to come. And environment, environment is probably the hardest task you have. Been through all of the remote learning, hybrid learning, all the masks, all the restrictions that we have to have in trying to get these kids back up and running, and there's a lot of emotional, you know, damage out there. We hear the stories, I hear the stories, my kids are at the high school. You know, there's kids that are getting off the bus and not going to school, hanging out in the bathrooms all the time. I appreciate that we're putting forth the effort to try to improve that, but it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a long, a long journey, and there's a lot that we have to do. So we have to keep, keep our fingers on the pulse and do everything that we can to maintain the safety, health, and emotional, social needs of all of our kids. So, long story short, I'm, I give proficient in this area across the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Palowski. Mister DeMello.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. So I'll break these down. So for 2A, which is environment, I posted exemplary. 2B, human resources management and development, I marked proficient. The reason I marked proficient is although restructuring the human resources management area, I'm sure will help in the future, an improvement in recruitment and retention is essential. A review of applicants in a timely manner and communication throughout the hiring process, I believe, critical to candidate interaction. And I mention that because there has been instances where folks have reached out to me that may have applied, and there was a lack of communication as where they stand in the process. And we lose those candidates, which I thought were fine candidates, to other districts. So I mentioned that as proficient because now that we have more folks in that area, maybe we can improve that, and I'm sure it will be improved. For 2C, scheduling and management information systems, I also marked proficient. And what comes out of this comment is that disruption. And I took it to mean this, minimizing disruptions, disruptions and distraction essential to not only student success but faculty and staff success. We need to reevaluate our internet broadband service capabilities and all other network challenges that have been faced pre, post-COVID-19. Example, copiers, printers. And if I can expand upon that, many times we get communication, which is an all-users email that comes out from Carolyn Brunel, explaining that system's down, whether it's internet or copiers are not photocopying or printers are not accepting the information to be printed, and no fault of hers, of course. I, I think it's infrastructure. I think we need to expand that. The conversation I have with the superintendent today, I know that TMLP does our internet, is our internet service provider. Maybe we can go out and look at what's out there. And I know we have a great affordable rate with TMLP. But, you know, seeing these emails come periodically and more times than I want to see them is, to me, a disruption, not only for our students but our faculty and staff that need to do their job. So that's why I marked that proficient. For C, scheduling, hang on, hang on a minute.
D.
That was C, proficient. For D, law, ethics, and policies, I marked exemplary. And for E, fiscal systems, I marked exemplary with no comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister DeMello. Mrs. Almeida, this is management and operations, standard two.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I think that the superintendent on the environment, developing plans and procedures and routines, he does a good job with that, with the social and emotional needs of our students. I think, I personally feel that what we need in Taunton I think, I personally feel that what we need in Taunton, and probably through the superintendent might, could possibly look into this, we address the educational needs of our students, you know, and the social and emotional needs educationally. But I think you, we need to do it in a more, and I've discussed this with him in the past, more, we need like a clinician that's going to address those needs, because I think that they can develop it a little bit more and help the students better achieve their goals. Human Resources, I think is good as far as recruiting and hiring. I would like the superintendent to have a more hands-on approach with that and meet the new hires before they sign their contracts. I also feel that we need to plan, or he needs to look into maybe developing a succession plan for like a principal, you know, people within our system, help them move up. I know we're trying to recruit people from the outside, too, but we need to have some kind of succession plan in place if someone leaves, that we can readily fill a position from within. Scheduling and Management Information, I don't have any problems with that. I think he does a very good job with that in Law and Ethics. Developing a budget, he does support the district's visions and missions and goals. However, sometimes there's some, some things in the budget that we don't all agree with, and I think that needs to be taken into consideration a little bit more. So, overall, I would say that he does a great job, but in some areas, he needs to improve. Thank you.
Do you have an overall rating on this category for him, Mrs. Almeida? Exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, unsatisfactory? Hello?
I, I'm sorry. What did you say?
I said, did you have an overall rating for him on this category? Exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, unsatisfactory?
Well, the overall for one, I, I take each one of them individually.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I wouldn't, and as I said, I probably explained that in my evaluation, how I felt about each area. Okay?
Thank you. Ms. Dougherty?
Fascinated by the video.
It's a good movie.
It's like a movie, right, right, right. So, thank you, thank you very much, and to my colleagues as well. So, under this category, Management and Operations, the first section, Environment, I think that Mr. Cabral is a very planful person. I was watching him tonight organize his materials and imagining various categories as he wanted to deal with them. And I think that, that his, one of his strengths is to be very well organized and planful and planning ahead and making sure that he has all of his ducks in a row in order to best serve the children and families in the community. So, I would rate him exemplary in that category. I was, under the second category, Human Resources, I was pleased with the reorganization and the addition of staff in our Human Resources Division. One of the major concerns had been previously, at any rate, and I haven't heard recently, about the time lag where people would apply for positions and never get a response, or it took many months to get a response. And then if they came to interview and weren't selected, they weren't getting timely responses either. And so, I'm hoping that that aspect of our Human Resources Department changes, changes a great, a great deal. One of the things that we have done over the years since I have been on the board is to look internally for qualified candidates for various positions. So, one of the tenants of the way in which we have hired is to, if there are ways in which we can reward our staff, it is by elevating them into different positions at higher levels. And we have done a very exemplary job at, at doing that. And I would hope that we would extend that philosophy to ensure that we are looking at external candidates as well, so that we get that nice mix of internal understanding of the district, but also we could add with our staff a different perspective and point of view where that is appropriate to hire those who are not hired from within. So, I'm pleased with that reorganization. So, I would give the superintendent, just making some suggestions for changes, but an exemplary in that category for taking the lead and changing that, that department. Scheduling and Management Information Systems, again, this is one of those categories that I am not privy to on a day-to-day basis. I don't really know what's going on there. I spoke to the issue previously about data and the use of data. And so, again, I don't know, maybe it's a retreat with the school board taking a deep dive into, you know, what forms of data you are collecting and how that's used and how that's applied to move forward with our academics or our students. So, I, maybe it is a communication issue, because I'm pretty sure, I can assume that that's going on, but I'm not sure from my own experience. So, I would mark you as proficient there. Under the next category, Law, Ethics, and Policies, I think that very frequently during this past year and even before that, we, I thought that we relied too much on getting the opinion of legal counsel, whether it's an interpretation of a law or a policy or some other activity that the, even Robert's Rules, should we proceed this way or that way, saying, let's get a letter from their, our legal counsel so that we can be sure that we're moving in the right direction. I think that there is a collective history and expertise in this room and will continue to be where we can interpret by experience our own policies, making sure that we are implementing policies and going in the right direction. And that, that includes Robert's Rules. We have an expert on Robert's Rules sitting in the room. Relying too much on legal services, legal counsel, puts us in a position where we would continue to wait for those interpretations before we move forward. So, I would, and I know the superintendent has that expertise as well. So, I would mark the superintendent proficient in that respect, while, of course, you are very much cognizant of federal laws and state laws in terms of the way in which we function as a school department. And Fiscal Systems are without question. I think that, I've never worried about the budget particularly or the appropriation of funds. We are always included in recommendations that you have made, particularly with CARES money and ESAR money coming into the district and outlining for us where those resources should go and being very clear about why those resources should point in that direction. And so, I think that I very much appreciate that kind of, those kinds of recommendations, and so would mark you exemplary there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty. Mrs. Fagan?
So, does she, she's got separate things on that one?
Oh, I didn't, I guess it's kind of a P slash.
You've got a E. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, it, you know, I, there are two areas in which I marked the superintendent proficient and three where I marked the superintendent as exceeding expectations. So, that's kind of like.
Two Es and a P, two Ps.
P.
Three Es and two Ps.
Two Es and three Ps?
No, the other way around.
Yeah, I'll, I'm going to leave it to the two of you to sort it out at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I've got, I've got the same thing, too, but in different categories.
Go ahead, Mrs. Fagan.
I have the Environment, Scheduling and Management Information, and Law, Ethics, and Policies. Policies, I give them exceeds expectations. Human Resources Management, I give it a proficient. I, I know there were some problems in there, and there were some things that were changing, and people weren't keeping up with it, and same issue that Mr. DeMello had with people that didn't hear back and things like that. And I do agree with, I think you were the one that said it about moving people up in the district, you know, kind of rewarding them for a job well done. Fiscal Systems, I worry about, I'm not sure about some of the things with funding. I'm really worried about these ESAR funds and where they leave us. I'm always afraid the budget's just going to go haywire and we're not going to, just, it's just something that nags at me. It's, it's just when I see too many programs coming in, I think sometimes we have to reevaluate where we're going. There's been some things that happened that, as Mrs. Almeida said, they weren't particularly fond of some of the things that happened. But I worry about maintaining, I'm just, just seems to me that we're throwing money around everywhere in this country, and I don't know at what point you hit the wall with it. So, I, I want to be careful about, I don't want to get ourselves, us, ourselves too overextended as far as putting in programs, and all of a sudden, you can't maintain them. So, that's my concern. So, I've got two Ps and three Es, like you, Ms. Dougherty, but just in different categories.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
Okay?
I have a few comments on Management and Operations, standard two. I, over the 2021 school year, I've had an opportunity to be in many discussions. And on A, Environment, it's amazing the amount of work that took place to get us from hybrid learning, or remote, to hybrid, and then from hybrid to in-person, including all of the health and safety protocols, working with our nurse manager, Board of Health, and just getting the amount of being, being above the curve on getting six months with the PPE, classroom protection, plexiglass, in-room air filters, HVAC upgrades. All that had to take place during this school year. I marked that as exemplary. Human Resources, although I understand, some of my colleagues said, all of these categories in Management and Operations, I think personally, this is the superintendent's strong suit. We did have a new revamp of the Human Resource Department, but with the amount of positions that were, and the amount of moving parts, three people are running that whole operation for a staff of approximately 1,500. I marked that as exemplary. Scheduling and Management, although I'm not an expert at this, from what I, from what I have seen and witnessed, I marked this as exemplary. Law, Ethics, and Policies, understanding the laws, school committee policies, and collective bargaining. I can't, I know that just one aspect of this was, did my unit of day colleagues and myself, just to get back to hybrid learning, we spent 100 hours in, in negotiations. So, without a doubt, that was doubt. Again, we're evaluating the superintendent, but he also has his leadership team. But the leadership on this was exemplary. And, and without a doubt, the next item, Fiscal Systems, without a doubt, I've been here 12 years, and he's either been the budget, just the superintendent for Finance and Operations, or the superintendent. And under this last year, with all of the issues we had, and that's including the loss of money, and then the gain of grants, and I won't, I won't even go into all of the, all of the, quote, what I would call CARES money, ESAR money, and all of the other acronyms, and how we're spending it, because we need to support kids. It's, it's remarkable. So, I'll, I'll mark that as exemplary. So, my overall rating is exemplary on that. Wishes of the committee on the rating for standard two, Management and Operation. Mr. DeMello?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we take each item individually and maybe do a roll call.
We could do each item individually if that's what you'd like without having a motion. So, we can start with A, Environment.
I'd like to make a motion to post exemplary of the superintendent.
Second? Second, by Mr. Fiore. On the motion, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can you repeat the motion? I didn't hear.
I'm sorry.
Mrs. Almeida, it was a motion to post Environment as exemplary.
So, Mrs. Almeida, Mr. DeMello asked that the five items in category, excuse me, in standard two, Management Operations, be broken up individually in this particular category. So, I'm breaking them up individually, and right now, we're voting on A, Environment, in the, in the rating for Environment. And the motion was, Mr. DeMello, repeat the motion, please.
The motion was to grade or post exemplary.
And it was seconded by Mr. Fiore, and on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item, standard two, Management and Operations, Human Resource Management and Development. Mr. DeMello?
Mr. Chairman, I, for 2B, Human Resources Management Development, I would suggest grading the superintendent as proficient. I've heard many comments tonight from fellow colleagues, and we have to remember that we're evaluating the past, not the future restructuring of HR, which just happened recently. And that's my reasoning for marking proficient.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fagan. On discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, Mrs. Almeida, do you, Mrs. Almeida, did you vote on that?
I didn't hear, I can't hear, but I can hear when you speak, Mr. Chairman, I can't hear when somebody's making a motion, what the motion was.
Marcus, do we have a, do we have a problem?
I'm not sure. Watch if you can hear us. I can turn her up.
But she can't hear us, though.
She can't hear us. Can you hear me here?
I can hear you, fine.
Can you hear me, Mrs. Almeida? Mrs. Almeida?
It's too far away.
Can you hear me?
It should be the headphone, yes. It should do the hearing.
Can you hear me?
Check the host system. I can check the host more, yeah. And everyone's using their mics, right?
Hold on, Mrs. Almeida.
So, what was the motion?
I will, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right. Mr. DeMello, could you repeat the motion, please, Mr. DeMello?
It was to, for Human Resources Management Development.
I can't hear Mr. DeMello. He's mumbling.
Mrs. Almeida, is this clear? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, thank you.
Wonderful. So, for 2B, Human Resources Management Development, my motion was to grade or mark the superintendent as proficient.
Okay. Thank you.
That was seconded by Mrs. Fagan. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ms. Dougherty, you're opposed?
This is again?
Same one.
No.
Mrs. Almeida votes no.
No, I voted yes.
I'm sorry. It's getting late. Ms. Dougherty voted no. Sorry about that. Did you get that, Wendy? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We're going to go on to the next item, Superintendent's Performance Rating for Standard Three, Family and Community Engagement. So, if I go by my, I'm sorry, Mr.
Do you still have three more categories? C, D, E?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a little ahead of myself. Thank you, Mr. DeMello, I apologize. We're still on cat, standard two, Management and Operation, and this next item is Scheduling and Management Information Systems under category two. Mr. DeMello, do you have a motion?
I'll refer to my colleagues to make the motion this time.
Mr. Fiore? Mr. Fiore?
I'll move exemplary on this. I think he's done a lot of work with systems.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fa, Mrs. Fagan. All those in fa, excuse me, any discussion?
I'm sorry, what is the...
So, the motion is exemplary under item two C. So, standard two, letter C, scheduling and management information systems. The motion was to, to rate that category exemplary. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Present.
Opposed?
Present.
No opposed, and one present. Did you get that, Wendy? Thank you. Next item is two D, law, ethics, and policies, under standard two.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to grade the superintendent exemplary for that category.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mrs. Mrs. Almeida? All those in, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item two E, fiscal systems. Mr. DeMello.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to grade the superintendent exemplary for fiscal systems.
Seconded by Mrs. Dougherty. Maybe it is Dougherty, I'm sorry. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Kind of a point of information.
Yes, Ms. Dougherty, I'm sorry.
Why did we vote on each one of those separately and not on the previous two?
Because Mr. Mr. DeMello asked that they be broken out, and I said, I would, the chair, the chair...
So, you would have said, if there's no objection, then we would do that, like you said?
Right. He objected to having them as one unit. Thank you. All right, we're halfway home. Next item, sta, superintendent's performance rating for standard three, family and community engagement. The, the education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with family, families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the district and its schools. So, if I go by my same, um, start place, it is now, Mr. Palowski, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. So, in family and community engagement, I really appreciate the efforts to expand social media and all the different ways to reach all the people in the community. I particularly liked hearing the perspective from Hector today that our students are actually seeing that impact. You know, there's a lot, there's a lot of information to be shared, and one way doesn't fit for everybody, so I appreciate all the different ways we're trying. Having said that, we gotta improve the website. The website is just difficult to navigate, it's difficult to find information. I mean, I have people reaching out to me, and I'm trying to get contact info, and I have trouble finding it. So, you know, we send out all these emails, we send out these posts, but that information is hard to go back and find, you know, especially with all the emails. So, the, the website needs to be that place for like, uh, reference points, like, oh, when was that thing gonna be? Click, here's the calendar. So, um, we're doing a great job, but that's an area where we can improve. But I really, I really appreciate, uh, the quick responses that we're getting to, uh, parents and family members. Uh, I can say personally, anybody that reaches out to me brings a concern to me. I reach out to Superintendent Cabral, and he will either reply himself or put the right person, uh, in touch very quickly. So, I appreciate that, because you're really, you're serving the people that you need to serve. So, yes, so overall, um, my, my rating is proficient in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, for categories three, A, B, C, and D, I have graded, uh, I hate that term, graded, uh, but posted.
Rating, rating.
Rating, yeah, okay, rating, yeah, rating, yeah. I've rated the superintendent, I don't like that word either, but anyway. Three, A, B, C, and D, exemplary, and I have a written statement, once again. Superintendent Cabral has always been available seven days a week to listen to multiple areas of concern that I confront as a school committee member from families throughout the year. Let me just repeat, seven days a week to listen to multiple areas of concern. He will delegate to the proper team member and will follow up accordingly. In my observation, I have noticed that sometimes too much communication does not necessarily deliver the message that needs to be communicated. A streamlined and unified message delivered via many communication channels is critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Mrs. Almeida, you with us? Mrs. Almeida? No? She froze? All right, well, Ma, Marcus, we need a miracle here. Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Suzai. Among all of the, the level of importance in all of the categories that we have already evaluated, I think that the family and community engagement is really, really the most critical aspect of the work that the Taunton Public Schools, uh, can do. When parents are making the decision, when the school choice, possibility of school choice reared its head, the Taunton Public Schools was the only, uh, school, uh, system that was open to school choice. And now every other district around us is open to school choice, and we have watched our numbers climb over the years, uh, putting more children in other school districts than taking them out of our own. And I think as a result of that movement upward, we developed a brochure, um, a couple of years ago, that I don't, I don't know that it surfaced, I don't, I don't know where it is, but it, it, it needs to surface again. I think that we are an exemplary school system, and we need to continue to inform our community, our families, uh, about, about what it is that we're doing on a regular basis and why we are exemplary, so that we can capture back some of those youngsters that have gone to other school systems. So, and we move on to homeschooling, where there are more children homeschooled as a result of the pandemic to some degree, families deciding not to send their children back yet, um, and keeping them at home. So, we need to reach out to those families, and we probably are reaching out to those families, to encourage them to bring their children back to the Taunton Public Schools. The family, we, we established a process of, a series of committees about three or four years ago, uh, what did we call them? CITs, I think, community input teams. But the, we lo, I, I think that we lost our way, and maybe it was the pandemic, that created an environment where we were disconnected from the work of those, uh, community input teams, and the school committee never really, at least I don't remember, uh, never really heard about what the outcome of the work, uh, of those teams had been, and whether or not those, that work is ongoing. We have PTAs, we have, um, school-based groups. I remember, Mr. Cabral, you recommended that we appropriate more funds to help to support those school-based groups, not the PTAs, but the other groups, those that helped us develop the school improvement plans, I think, at the school level. Uh, we have the, uh, Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We need to rely more on those groups and give them a bigger role in participating in various ways in the decision-making on behalf of the school in which their children reside, and the work that we're doing in the overall, in the district. And I'm not sure that, I mean, we have forums, uh, budget forums and other kinds of forums to get family input, and that's a great effort to make, but I think that we rely on, and I think it was Mr. Palowski that mentioned it, social media. Not every family relies on social media, and not every family is going to go look at that Facebook page, or read their emails, or even have an email address. So, I think that we need to do a better job of thinking of the various ways in which we can reach out to the community. And the community as a whole, I know that you belong, the school department belongs to a variety of groups, uh, in, in the, uh, community, the koanis, the Rotary, the Boys' Club, the, you know, we have people that sit on those boards and participate, uh, in those, those groups, and we need to do more of that, so that the word about the exemplary nature of our school system is out, that we are reaching out to the community to seek their input genuinely, to implement what it is that they have to say. So, I, um, I, I rated the superintendent proficient in all of those aspects, because I think that there is room for improvement in this very, very important area. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty. Mrs. Almeida, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we're working on standard three, family and community engagement. Do you have any comments on the four categories? For the superintendent's evaluation, please.
Yeah, I think the superintendent keeps, um, you know, parents informed, he always calls, makes, you know, tries to address their concerns, he calls them back, um, he sends out letters. It's very difficult, as a committee person, um, to know how much interaction he really has with a parent or parents, because we don't get involved in that part of it. So, it's difficult to evaluate him effectively on that. But from what I see, and, um, what we get, as far as the emails and the, and the letters that are going out, and the, um, activities that he goes to, and the people that he talks to, I think he does a great job with that. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Almeida. Do you have any rating for, uh, any of the categories, or an overall rating on this?
I think he's exemplary in that.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Hold on, let me just check my list here. Mrs. Fagan?
Yes. I would give him exemplary in all the categories on this.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
I have no, no issue with any of it. I think he goes above and beyond. I think sometimes parents, I, I think when you don't get what you want all the time and we're following state law, they, they tend to think you don't care about them, but I don't believe that's true of Mr. Cabral. I think he did cares deeply about the, the kids in this district, and, uh, I think people that think otherwise just don't really know how thoughtful he is about his approaches to what we should be doing with the students. So, I, that's, hands down, all exemplary for, for me, for me, for that category.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My evaluation on this score is gonna be radically different from what it's been in other aspects of this, and radically different from where I think the rest of the committee seems to be. Because this is an area where perception is reality. I think Mr. Cabral does the job and does it proficiently. I do think there are issues with how it's received. I don't think everybody who's been on the end of his communications is necessarily satisfied with what they get, and I think the overall communications system, really, or situation at least, probably needs improvement. But I think he's doing his best, and I think it's a matter of how it's coming across and not, uh, not his doing his job. So, I would rate him proficient in, in all of these things, but also with a caution that I think it's an area that needs to be looked at, and it's not really his problem, but I think it, there is some, some way that the, the public needs to become a little more receptive, and that's probably gonna involve some salesmanship. So, I'd say proficient.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. I just have a few comments on this, um, standard three, family and community engagement. Because they're somewhat overlap, these categories are somewhat overlap, I'll make a few comments, and then I'll give an overall rating. The social, there, there's many forms, and you know, you say, how many, how many forms can we communicate, how many types of communications can we communicate, types of communications can we communicate with the public, the parents, and et cetera? I mean, we use three forms of social media, we, we, we use email, we use, um, hard copies go home in the backpacks, or in the bottom of the backpacks, they may stay in there, but, uh, so, those, those certainly are, are effective. And also, he doesn't shy away from any controversial issues. If there's a problem, if there's something going on, he informs the, informs the public, or the school community, or the specific, uh, school community with a press release. And I find these press releases very, very effective, and a very, very, um, important part of communicating with the, um, public. They're concise, they get right to the, the heart of whatever the issue is, and I, and I certainly think it's an effective means. And, um, I think if you look at the overall picture of how they're received, um, we can only give the information, you know, we can, we can only spoon-feed so much. So, really, you're just trying to use all forms of communication. And I, I think, uh, one of the other issues that, that I really liked was the, the, the mental health and the health collaboration with Manit this, this year. So, talking about reaching out to a health, in, a health agency, and Ha, Ha, Manit Health, and, and having them partnership with us. I find that, that was to happen during this school year. So, really, um, again, we're talking about the twenty twenty-one, twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year, uh, not perfect, but I think my overall rating is exemplary on, uh, family and community engagement. I really don't know what else can be done. I, I think, I think this is a Herculean task, as my colleague said once, uh, and that's my, um, my take on standard three, family and community engagement. I will, um, ask my colleagues for any, any motions at this time on, uh, this category. Mr. DeMello?
Mr. Chairman, uh, for performance rating number three, family and community engagement, items three, A, B, C, and D, I'd like to make a motion to rate the superintendent exemplary.
Do I hear a second? Seconded by Mrs. Fagan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mrs. Almeida, did you get that?
Aye.
Thank you. All those opposed?
No.
No by Mrs., Mr. Fiore. The chair votes aye. And Ms. Dougherty, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Thank you, moving on to superintendent's performance rating for standard four, professional culture. The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by nurturing and sustaining a district-wide culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. So, let's see. Mrs. DeMello, item four, would you like to start?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So, uh, for, I'm gonna break these down, for, for A, communicate, commitment to high standards, I rated exemplary. For B, cultural proficiency, exemplary. Uh, for C, proficient, and my notes on that simply says, please see performance rating number three, which goes back to the comment about the communication, uh, delivering the message, being over-communicating and streamlining the, a unified message to various communication channels, uh, the reason I, I rated that as proficient. For D, continuous learning, exemplary. For E, shared vision, exemplary, and for F, managing conflict, exemplary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Mrs. Almeida, standard four, professional culture.
Okay, um, I would rate him exemplary in all of those... Okay, um, I would rate him exemplary in all of those areas except for our continuous learning. I'm not sure if, um, the superintendent is doing any professional development for his own self, is taking any courses or anything like that, so. Other than that, I find it.
So proficient, so exemplary on all categories except D, that would be proficient, right?
Yeah, because I don't know if he's taking any, uh, courses right now.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. So I, I rate the superintendent exemplary in all categories except the one that references the use of student data. Again, it's the same issue that has come up in two different, um, goals that I'm not aware of, fully aware of what, how the, how that data is used to support student learning. So I would rate the superintendent proficient in, uh, in that area simply because it's an, it's an assumption. So you're looking at D, continuous learning?
Is that, is that the one that has it? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to scan through as I'm writing.
Yeah, you look puzzled.
Thank you.
So exemplary in all categories except D, continuously.
Thank, thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Fagan? You're up. Uh, standard, excuse me, standard four, professional culture.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I find him to be exemplary in all these areas. He certainly works to very high standards. I think, uh, cultural proficiency particularly shows through, he, you know, he shares a lot about his immigrant experience and is really sensitive to, uh, a lot of other cultures and the absorption of students from all kinds of backgrounds. And I think that's very important. I do think, even though I said I, I have problems with how some of his communication may be perceived, I think he does it well. Continuous learning, um, I think even in his own case, he certainly has done a lot with conferences and case studies and that sort of thing, regardless of whether he's taken formal courses or not. And certainly he encourages continuous learning on behalf of students and staff. He's been very clear on sharing a, a vision and, uh, I think he does it about as well as anybody can expect with managing conflicts. So I'd say exemplary across the board here.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. Mr. Palowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Yeah, so professional culture, um, I think Superintendent Cabral and his entire staff, uh, they always conduct themselves in the most professional manner. Um, that's, that's all I've ever observed and I think he encourages that throughout his staff, um, throughout the entire school system. Particularly impressed with how we've utilized Zoom to get professional development out to everybody, you know? We on the school committee have been invited, invited to take part in some of these and when my schedule allowed it, I would take part in, you know, to be able to get a training session out to 800-plus people in one shot is remarkable and that's kind of take lemons and make lemonade. Nobody was using Zoom before the pandemic and if you put out a professional development, you might only get the people who signed up for it. And a lot of times if you only get the people who signed up for it, you're missing the people that actually need the development. So I, I'm appreciative of the fact that you've made, uh, you know, a, a lot of this really critical training, particularly cultural proficiency, um, available to all of your, your, your staff out there. So my overall rating is proficient in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. I just have a, a few comments on standard four, professional culture. This, to me, this, this has a lot of, uh, moving parts. I know that, um, there's many aspects of this, including the superintendent being a part of the Mass Ready, Racial Equity, Diversity, Inclusive Committee. Also, his different things and I know one of them I read was the ELL, the new curriculum in ELL. So he stays in touch with, um, what's going on with, with, uh, different groups. And as far as the overall professional culture, I, I can't, every time I've dealt with or any of this leadership team or any of the staff, the professional culture is at the highest standard I, you could possibly get. It's just, um, it's just mod, they, they model each other and they, and they, it's always a positive, professional, engaging group. And I know anytime I've ever had a, um, community member, a parent interact with a superintendent, um, with a superintendent, uh, he's always treated them with the utmost, uh, respect and, but not, more, more importantly, he was able to explain and resolve or communicate their issue and come up with an effective solution. So my rating on professional culture is exemplary on the, all categories. And, um, I think that's it on standard four, professional culture. Wishes of the committee? Mr. DeMello?
Mr. Chairman, uh, for performance rating number four, professional culture, for all items except for item four C, exemplary. Item four C, proficient. That's my motion.
Second.
On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mrs. Almeida, did you hear that one? Thank you. Any other comments, concerns? The chair will close the superintendent's evaluation, move on with the agenda. Administrative business staffing report.
It's being placed on file.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Reed's collaborative 2021, excuse me, 2020, 2021 annual report, which is an enclosure. Any comments or concerns?
Motion to receive and place on file.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Letter, number I, excuse me, letter I, subcommittee report, Finance and Law Subcommittee, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee on Finance and Law, at this evening with myself and Mr. Souza, uh, reviewing the agenda. There are no student activities to reimburse on this warrant. The Assistant Superintendent, um, has submitted a request that we add to the, uh, list of items available for a voucher addition to a special warrant. The, uh, reissuing of vendor payments due to underlying conditions such as stop payment, lost payment on cash checks. And, uh, the committee voted to approve that. Then, uh, the Assistant Superintendent provided a first quarter fiscal '22 budget update with the appropriation revolving in grant accounts. We were then presented with, uh, two bills payable warrants, uh, fiscal, fiscal year '21 for H7420 and fiscal year '22 of $546,43.54. On the fiscal '22 warrant, there is an item for payment to Old Colony History Museum. I'm on the board there, so I needed to be recorded as present on that, so we're submitting that for, uh, approval without the Old Colony appropriation and then we'll take a vote on that separately. And finally, the Assistant Superintendent, uh, gave us an update on facilities, um, including, um, work on the, um, Alternative High School Project, which is coming along pretty much on pace and, uh, most items have been delivered now. And that's the report of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. Wishes of the subcommittee report for my colleagues, I just want to remind my colleagues that we pulled out, because Mr. Fiore has a conflict with the Old Colony Historical Society, he couldn't second my motion to approve the, the whole warrant, so we pulled the Old Colony Historical, excuse me, Old Colony His- History Museum out, so we voted on everything less that, so that's part of his report and then I'm going to, we're going to vote on that as a board, uh, separately. So on the, on the subcommittee report, wishes of the committee and the recommendations.
So you're also talking about, so I have a couple of questions. So you're asking for a vote on all of the?
Well, we need a motion, yes, I'd like to vote on it, then we can do it under discussion.
Okay, so the motion to adopt the recommendations?
And approve the report. Motion made, motion made, I have a second. Seconded by Mr. DeMello?
For discussion, yes.
And in discussion. We have her, Mrs. Doherty, then you, okay? Ms. Doherty?
So, yeah, so, um, I'm going to, I'll hold my question regarding the, what the memo from Ms. Monahan is regarding special warrants, I think that's something that you should tell us when speaker.
Mr. DeMello?
True, wait, wait, I can.
Oh, sorry. I, I apologize. Thought you just said one. I'll, I'll give it, I'll give it two, two, two times for you.
Under the warrant, um, the Education Alliance on page 14. Could you? So I could go over the Education Alliance and, uh, I know Dr. Samuel, uh, who is head of the Education Alliance. Tell me what the role of the Education Alliance is in terms of distance learning, class enrollment programs, what it does? And how often do you pay them? I had to pick this up on the more previous, but.
Yeah, so the Education Alliance is supporting the high school and the CVTE department to offer more dual enrollment, uh, courses at the high school and it's on a month-to-month basis as needed for, uh, support and helping to grow our dual enrollment programs.
So I don't know what that means, so. Can I help the CVTE program offer more dual enrollment?
Correct. He. I can, I can provide you with additional backup regarding the work that is done, but it.
Does, does it connect us to various higher ed institutions in the moment? Does it, is, uh, Education Alliance working with the CVTE department to create new programs?
Yes, yes, and, and yes. So this, the Education Alliance analyzes data that we provide. Education Alliance helps, uh, helps us to develop and identify key areas of need that align with the workforce in Southeastern Massachusetts so that we can develop programs and help get our students into courses that'll better prepare them for post, their post-secondary pursuits.
Is this one-time payment or is it?
Again, it's on a month-to-month basis as needed. So it's not a year-long contract. It's on a month, so I believe the last, it's, I believe we're right now, two months of support is what we've signed up for.
Okay.
Do we, Ms. Doherty had a first question. Do you want to go ahead with your first question, Superintendent? Maybe answer that on the, um, the memo in regards to the adding of the, uh, special warrant, uh, the voucher for special warrant. Superintendent want to answer that number thirteen, adding the reissuing of vendor payments?
Uh, sure. So reissuing vendor payments due to underlying conditions, uh, so this would only occur in the event that we had to stop a payment or a payment was stopped and then a check had to be reissued by the city. If a payment was lost and we had to reissue a check or a payment to a vendor, or if a check went uncashed and was canceled and a check had to be reissued to the vendor. So what this would do is it would help to expedite, to make sure that something that the school committee already approved and something that the city council already approved didn't have to go through the formal approval process again, which would, which can take up to three weeks. So all this would do would allow the city to reissue another check to pay a vendor who's already authorized to be paid by this school board and by the city.
All set? Ms. Doherty? Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, my comments concerning exactly the memorandum from the Assistant Superintendent Finance, Ms. Monahan, uh, I, I see that nothing has been added to the special warrant list since 2016, which precedes me on the school committee. For the past four years as school committee member, I don't recall seeing a reissuing of a vendor payment doing to whatever condition it may be, stop payment, lost payment, uncashed checks. I may be wrong, but I don't recall, uh, remembering seeing that. I don't understand why this needs to be on this special warrant list. If I haven't seen it in four years, I don't believe this is going to be a common occurrence. And if it is, uh, waiting three weeks is fully acceptable because, you know, the check could be a hundred thousand dollars and there are a lot of games played out there. We know we've been taken by vendors in the past, my time with Superintendent, uh, Hackett before Mr. Cabral was superintendent. And I, I don't want to get the city, the taxpayers, our students in a predicament where we're issuing multiple checks and, uh, you know, stuff happens, funny things happen. So I, I don't, I, I will not support this. I, I hope my colleagues understand my point, uh, that we do not need to add this as a, a special warrant where there's no checks and balances by us. Yes, granted, we are, already had approved this check for payment, uh, but a lot of stuff happens and I'm, I'm very afraid that we could get taken for, um, taken for a ride. So I, I don't think it's a necessity to rush the process because in my four years, I don't recall ever seeing one of these. And correct me if I'm wrong, if there's an example you want to point out to me, I think that I would definitely like to hear that, but I don't think it's a priority to put this on the special warrant and, uh, I will not support this and hope my colleagues will support me too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. On the motion, all those in favor? I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, what are we voting on? All five items?
So the, the motion was, the motion was made and seconded that to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the subcommittee.
Mr. Chairman, could we split these out, each item individually for a roll call vote?
Let me think about this for a second because the report, let's, um, accept the report and then the, then we'll, then we could go on the items of the subcommittee. Help me with, Mr. Fiore, would that be, uh, pru, would that be prudent to accept the report and then pull out the recommendation and then just?
Well, it may, it may save some things, but I, I don't want to deny due process either, but, uh, I think you at least try to see if you can get the, the report accepted and then deal with the recommendations separately.
Okay. So, um, Ms. Doherty, if, what we're going to do is we're just going to ask you to withdraw the, um, recommendations and just vote on the report. Accept the report. The recommendations we're going to take individually.
So accepting the report was the first motion anyway. So we should vote on the report and then divide the questions?
That's what we're doing, that's what I'd like to do. So the, the motion, Ms. Mrs. Almeida, did you have something to say?
Yes, I did. Are you going to accept the report to pay all the bills, Mr. Chairman?
No, we're going to accept the report and then the, then we're going to, we're going to, the, the recommendation was to pay the warrant. After that, we're going to take that as a separate vote and we're going to break it out.
Okay. I heard Mr. Um, oh boy, I'm sorry.
DeMello?
I heard Mr. Um, DeMello say that he's never seen a special warrant. We've had special warrants in the past. So, I don't know. But that's not going to be part of the motion, right?
No, this motion here is just to accept the report.
Okay, thank you.
The recommendations are coming after. Mr. DeMello?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, uh, share once again that I, I've seen special warrants, I mean, we see them all the time, transportation, uh, except for athletics and field trips, that's fine. I'm just talking about the reissuing of vendor. I'm just talking about the reissuing of vendor payments, which is what's being proposed to be added to the special warrant list. I mean, there are things like meals taxes, student activity. We're not going to touch those first 12 items. It's the addition of item 13, Mrs. Almeida, that I have not recall seeing in my four years as a committee member. So that's why I want to exclude that because it's very, very rare that this could happen.
What we're going to do is we're going to vote on the motion to accept the report, and then I'm going to go down the finance and law agenda, and we're going to vote on each individual line item. So right now is to accept the report, not adopt the recommendations. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Before you divide the question in that way, is it necessary to take anything out of the motion with the exception of the memo on the special warrant? You just said you were going to vote on each.
Yeah, so what I'm going to do is...
And there's also the item that I had a conflict on. It has to be voted on separately.
I'm sorry, Jody, you'll have to take your mask off.
There's also the item that I had a conflict on, and so we couldn't pass it.
I'm going to ask if everyone picks up their agenda on the finance. I'm going to ask that we vote on item two, which is the voucher addition for the special warrant separately, and I'm going to ask the committee to adopt the recommendations on three, four, and five, which is, three was accept the, just to receive and place on file, the quarter one budget updates. Four was the bills payable and less the Old Colony. Five was the facilities update. And one was the student, no ex student activities. So I'm going to ask to adopt the recommendations of the subcommittee for everything except the voucher additions to the special warrant.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now I will ask for a motion to pay the warrant on the Old Colony History Museum because we had to pull that out because we didn't have a quorum to accept it. I will ask to pay the warrant for the Old Colony.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So for item two, we did not vote on that, correct?
I haven't got there yet.
Oh.
I'm going back there. Yes, right now I did everything but two.
Thank you.
Item two, the voucher of the special warrant, because I want to finish with the bills payable. So I'm asking for a motion to pay the bill for Old Colony History Museum.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We have one present. Mr. Fiore votes present. All right. Ms. Dougherty.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone action on item number two, voucher addition to special warrant. And the reason I'm asking for postponement is that I don't feel comfortable voting on it at the moment. I don't understand it. I don't, I have to talk further with the superintendent. I just need more information, otherwise I would have to vote for it.
Can I ask that, can I ask the member to table item voucher addition to special warrant until a future meeting, until we get more information? I think that's the best, we just table it.
So moved.
So moved, wait a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to indefinitely table this.
She said table it. She said, you can't indefinitely table it, but you could table it. There is a second, and there is no discussion on a table motion, so I'm going to take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes. I'll vote in opposition too, but the ayes have it. So we're table on that till we can get more information. Wendy, me and Jody Almeida voted in opposition.
Mr. Souza, it would be helpful, maybe we can talk offline, Carol, if we could just, what additional information are you requiring? What additional information is anyone else requiring? Because it's pretty straightforward. It's allowing the city treasurer to reissue a payment that this board and the city council already approved.
I think that...
I'll provide you with whatever information you need.
I think at this time what we'll do is anybody that has any questions, please contact the superintendent. Anyone that voted in, you know, I think all members should probably contact the superintendent to get it clear. I had a conversation with him already on this, so I was pretty clear on it. Anyone else that either doesn't understand it, or, I mean, people could just be opposed to it, which is fine, but just double check with the superintendent to understand what that is. Mr. DeMello?
Mr. Chairman, so to the superintendent, if he could, since we're, he may take stuff individually, I'd like to share with my colleagues, for the last four years, how many of these have come up? How many of these reissuing vendor payments due to underlying conditions? That would be helpful, too, so I could better understand.
That's fine, yeah. Moving on the agenda, I'm sorry, I apologize, subcommittee reports. Unit A Subcommittee, 12-121. I am the chair of that. Myself, Mrs. Fagan and Mrs. Almeida of I've Remote Technology, met with the Titan Education Association Subcommittee on Labor Management. I had four teachers on that subcommittee, and they gave us a list of a few items that they had concerns about, and we referred those concerns to the administration to look into and to respond to them at the appropriate time. And that is the report of the Unit A Subcommittee. Do I have a motion to... Motion made to accept the report. Seconded by Mr. Polowski, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. New business, FY '23 budget timeline, Superintendent Cabral.
Just providing the school board with an update on the budget timeline. Not much has changed from what you've seen in the past, other than the dates have been updated to reflect the FY '23 timeline, and we still anticipate, and I have not heard differently, that the governor's budget, I believe, will be released the third Wednesday in January.
Any questions or concerns? Thank you. Unfinished business? Yes, Mr. DeMello.
This is on a new business item?
New business item, yes, I'm sorry.
I'd like to refer to the December 15 meeting, discussion regarding, I was able to listen to the city council meeting last night. There was issues concerning a vax bus on BP property with protesters and other issues that took place. I just want a discussion to be on the agenda that we're prepared, should something like that happen, and making sure that our students, faculty, staff, and citizens at large are not in risk of any danger due to unforeseen circumstances. Because I know the vax bus has been on school property before.
Yep.
This issue just happened recently at BP, and I think it's something we should discuss and maybe have some preventative measures in place.
Double check on it.
Okay? Thank you.
We'll make sure that's on the, Wendy, could you put that, make sure that that's, we'll get the wording on that to put it on the agenda. Thank you. Item K, unfinished business action item updates. School committee recognition, December 8, 2021. That will be at the high school at 6 o'clock at the cafeteria, and we're not going to have any, we're going to do it a little different than we did before because they're not going to approach us. So how is that going to work?
They'll still be at the podium. We can make the recommendation that the public receiving the awards not go before the school committee to shake hands.
Right, right. I think that's a good idea.
If that's something that the committee wishes.
All right. Next item on the agenda is action item, Ms. Dougherty?
No, I go first.
Action item review? I don't see any right now that need to come off or on or anything added on. Any other unfinished business, Ms. Dougherty? Oh, action item, yes, go ahead.
So I cannot urge the superintendent more aggressively to bring forward our proposal to the city regarding the use of the nursing home for school, school use. I'm concerned about us missing the curve in terms of presenting to the city council what our intentions are, and it might be well to reiterate to the school committee what our intentions are because you're going to have a new school committee, perhaps a presentation here and then a presentation to the city council. Otherwise, we may miss out on the utilization of that property, which we are going to need, I think, for our expansion. The other thing, and it has been removed from the agenda, and that is the mural that's proposed for the Maukehi School. So I just wonder if you would indulge me by having me ask the superintendent, what's the plan for getting this done?
It's still being finalized.
So, but what is the plan for getting it done? Finalized, is that February, is that May, is it, what is it? Because I'm being asked that question, and I say the same thing that you say, it's being finalized, and so there's some...
So I'm hopeful that sometime probably late winter, early spring, we'll have the mural up, and then we can schedule a ceremony where we invite the families, invite the public, current and former school board members to attend the ceremony, where we dedicate the library to those three individuals that you dedicated the library to.
So why is it taking that long?
Because I'm still working with Mr. Bork to finalize the design. We still need to reach out to the families.
He's the artist, is that...
He's the in-house expert, correct. We're still reaching out to the families to obtain the quotes that they want for each individual family. So it's just a few moving parts. If we can get it done sooner, we'll get it done sooner. But I also want to be mindful that we're still dealing with the effects of COVID, and this will be an indoor celebration. So I want to make sure when we do do the dedication that we can invite as many people as possible and host it in a manner that is as safe as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty. Any other unfinished? I'd just like, on behalf of the school committee, we'd like to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah. Hanukkah began last Sunday evening and will continue until Monday, December the 6th. Again, on behalf of the school committee in the district, happy Hanukkah. Press time? Motion made and withdrawn, wait a second. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.